Motion to approve the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Ms. Burchard?
Yes.
Mr. Butke?
Yes.
Mr. Drakos?
Yes.
Ms. McWhiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weidman?
Yes, motion is approved. And that moves us to high school leadership. And Claudia and Macy are here tonight and looking forward to your report, please.
Should I go ahead and share my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you see our PowerPoint?
Looks great.
All right, Macy, you can start.
Hi, everyone, I'm Macy Nighting. I am the Secretary of Lake Orion Leadership. So I'm going to be going over what we have been up to over the past month in leadership. So to start, we have planned and executed the can drive, which just finished last week. In class, we've been working on the Great Charity Debate, which is a group activity where classmates choose a charity and it's like a bracket system and the winner gets to donate $100 to their charity. We've been doing lots of virtual team building activities. We paired with Oxford High School to start LOX Strong, which is an Instagram challenge between the two schools. And we are also partnering with Oxford and Clarkson Leadership to make a mental health initiative over social media. So since we last saw you, we have had two events, one being freshman first day, which took place on November 4th. Like I said in the previous slide, we also planned and had the can drive, which went from November 30th to December 11th. We are currently brainstorming ideas to have during the winter season, so we're kind of talking about either an outdoor winter festival or an outdoor walking and running event. Now I'm going to hand it over to Claudia.
Hi, I'm Claudia, the Vice President, and our main, our biggest event this year so far has been the can drive. This year, we kind of opened it up to more of every single school in the district because we know it's been a hard time for our community and we wanted to open this up to as many people as we possibly could. In the end, we ended up getting over 13,000 cans and half of those went to the Orient Oxford Fish Food Pantry and the other half went to the Baldwin Center. And we had our entire class help with the organization and bringing those down. And then this last slide is just some pictures from all the cans that we have. We organized the entire auditorium lobby into boxes. It was basically packed full and yeah, that's about it.
That's outstanding. How many people participated in the effort?
So we had, like throughout the two weeks that we had the can drive, we had a couple of kids each day volunteering with receiving cans and then like writing names down so we could log service hours. So there was about four people every day and then in the end, when we shipped all of our cans to the locations, we had the whole class working. So.
That's great.
It's a lot of.
It's a great effort. It's very much needed, as you know. Any other questions for our leadership report? Yes, Burgett?
Claudia and Macy just want to thank you for being here tonight and thank you so much for your leadership and for helping to think outside the box and help our community in a need that really need to be met. And you found a creative way to continue to do it in spite of all the challenges that you faced in accomplishing your goals. So thank you for all that and thank you for your leadership. So nice to see you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Others? I guess they're just providing you with applause. So thank you again. Thank you for being here tonight as well.
Thank you for having us.
All right. So we'll move to our next item and we have a presentation tonight. Mr. Roger Smith's here tonight and he is going to review a couple of course proposals with us. Heidi, did you want to say anything?
No, pretty much, pretty much that was it, Jim, but thank you, Roger, for, for being here. And as Jim had said, Roger's going to share with us two new classes that he is proposing. This has gone through the high school curriculum renewal team, the district chair team, as well as the board curriculum team. And so now he's presenting to the full board in hopes that we are able to put these two classes on the books for next fall. So Roger, thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you. And first, I do want to say congratulations and thank you to our outgoing board members, Nate and Mary Jo. And you know, Nate was a member of our broadcast program when he was a student at LOHS. I'm two years younger than him, so I distinctly remember the fall of my 10th grade year at the high school. Remember, the high school was grades 10 through 12 at the time. My class, of course, was brand new to the high school 10th grade year. I was in Nick Niera's first hour phys ed class. And we'd always start the day watching this announcements show. It was something the television production class was trying out. It was new. The show was called LOAM and who knew at that moment that I'd be the one to lead that program down the road. But one of the regular anchors we'd always see on that show was a senior named Nathan Butke. He was the big shot on campus and wow, boy, we all wanted to be just like him. And.
The lowest.
There he is.
Look at that mullet. Look at that mullet.
Nate, you'll be happy to know that since, you know, you're at the end of your term as a board member, I'll be posting the last show that you anchored. It's going to go out on our social media this evening. And I'll be sure to send you the, I'll be sure to send you a link. Hey, Mary Jo, you'll be happy to know that I do not think I have any archival footage to embarrass you with, so you're welcome.
Thank God.
That's awesome, Roger.
Thank you both. We do appreciate all that you do. Our Dragon Broadcast Program is now over 50 years old. It started in 1970 when a teacher by the name of G. Brett Saunders got hired at LOHS. And it started as an after-school club, then a single class and more. And that newscast was launched over 30 years ago now and we still, of course, are producing it even in a pandemic. And the program has continued to evolve over the past half century to where we are today. And now it's time for us to continue to develop and expand what we offer our students by adding these two classes that you see specifically focused on sports broadcasting and communication. The philosophy is that we have the athletic games already. We have the equipment. We have the interest among students. We just don't have the room or the time to do anything more within the current classes that we are, we already have and that we're already producing within those classes. And sports broadcasting is one of the two biggest subsets or branches of the broadcast world, the other being news. So we believe this will help us fill in a gap in what we're offering. Producing live broadcasts of games is certainly a key focus of those classes. We already do that with our varsity class, our varsity games to a degree, but this will even let us do even more. And it's, that's not all the classes would be about. As the descriptions talk about, we'll also be able to teach students about things like public address announcing, which is a form of sports communication. Believe it or not, there is a national curriculum for teaching students how to be PA announcers. Our sports and broadcast, our sports broadcasting communication to students would have the chance to take a national certification test. Our athletic department is on board for allowing students in these classes to do some of the announcing at various home games, especially freshmen and JV. We'll also be able to talk about other things like writing press releases, reporting sports on the web through social media, producing podcasts, et cetera. These course proposals have been in the works for about three years. As you know, we've been so appreciative of all the awards and recognition we've received over the, over the years, including being named the nation's best high school broadcast program in 2019. But we know there is so much more we still can do and that's where these courses come in. We already knew there weren't many high schools that offer what we do in broadcast and video journalism to the extent of what we do. And there's even fewer that have sports specific classes. So to some degree, we are blazing a new path here. But we do have many resources that, and partners we've been able to draw upon and will continue to do so, including, of course, Orient Neighborhood Television, partners at Fox Sports Detroit, the Michigan High School Athletic Association, a couple of high schools at the national level that are very comparable to ours in terms of their broadcast programs and that, and they already have this sort of thing. And we have so many alumni now, obviously in the industry, many of whom we stay in touch with and are connected to our program. And we have a CTE Advisory Committee too, which consists of industry professionals who provide us with feedback and help us steer the program as well. So that's a relatively short summary of how we've gotten to this point. We're looking forward to offering it next year as Heidi had mentioned with your approval and hopefully it will grow to be another robust offering of our Dragon Broadcast Program. So I appreciate your time and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Looks great. Questions for Roger?
Roger, what's your thoughts as far as class sizes and do you have any idea of what the participation, participation will be?
Yeah, so we have surveyed some groups of the, you know, the previous years that have come through the last couple of years. In terms of class size, Heidi and I have talked, we really, I think the maximum capacity is probably too much for a class like this because, you know, we have the games, but if we don't want to be spread too thin and not have enough for the students to do at the same time. But I think we can fit within the bounds of what our, you know, the teacher contract is for minimums and maximums and general suggestions there. So, but generally, Scott, I think there'll be a decent amount of interest, especially because these classes will be one-term classes that students could take multiple times, like they can do leadership multiple times and that sort of thing. But that, we find that we have lots of things we want to cover and we just don't have the time in the current classes. So hopefully this would allow the students that are interested in this side of things, more opportunities to do so. By the way, Scott, too, I've got footage of you from when you were in high school, but I'm not going to pull that out tonight. That'll be a different meeting.
Let's save that one.
Yeah.
Burgett? I'm glad there's some, I'm glad there's some excitement. That's, that's kind of what I was getting at is.
Yeah.
Is it seems like there would be a need, just having been around the sports programs the past five or six years and seeing the involvement even at the middle school level of the kids running the scoreboards and doing the scorebook. And I think it would just be awesome if they go that next step. So good work.
Yeah, thanks. It's the advent of live streaming, which has just become huge the past five or six years and so easy now. And that's really been a big factor in allowing this to be possible for us to stream more and more so easily.
Other questions? Any, Burgett, you had a question?
So yeah, and that's so much questions as comments and I appreciate your time tonight, Roger. And this excites me, it excited me when Heidi brought it to the curriculum committee. What's so impressive to me about this is how well A, you know, the program and what the students are looking for because we all know students drive the, the, not the curriculum, but the course offerings. And the work that you went in through in this to get input, who else was consulted in the creation of this course? Your list is so impressive. I mean, you went, just go local or rest in the state. You have nationwide, you had people put input into this course. And it leads me to believe that aside from how stellar your program already is and how exemplary it is, that this is going to probably be something other districts mimic.
Yeah, thank you. No, there, like I was trying to look for curriculum, a guide, you know, what, how do we figure this class out? And so I was searching and there is only a couple of schools that do it that I think of, but there, the, the one school I mentioned that in paperwork, Rampart in Colorado, they were named the best high school broadcast program in the country in 2018. And then we were the ones that, so I kind of connected with him anyway. Because hey, wow, let me see what his program offers and that sort of thing. And then turned out his structure is very similar to ours and he launched this kind of class about three or four years ago. So he's kind of gone through a little bit of the struggles already and saved me some of the headache. But those couple of schools that I mentioned have been helpful because there's, there's not a, you know, there's not a core curriculum for this sort of thing. So we're, we've had to blaze the path a little bit on ourselves, by ourselves.
Other questions for Roger? Yes, Jake, please.
Question about instructors because the, the number of course offering, you know, the number of sections you might need to offer. Are, are we good for have, you know, you and I think Mrs. Srock also teaches. Are we, is it potentially where we're going to need to train other teachers or to meet the need of these courses?
So you're right, Kathy Srock also teaches a broadcast class, basically whenever it's my off hour because we only have one TV studio. So we can't have both class, both my classes and hers in the studio at the same time. But she and I have talked quite a bit as, you know, we do have a radio podcast studio classroom as well. And the podcast side of things is just, you know, growing significantly. I mean, a lot of you probably listen to podcasts now that, I mean, we didn't do that five years ago. So anyway, she and I have talked about that exact question, Jake, hoping, expecting that we get a little, we get, you know, there'll be more students perhaps that want to take these classes. Right now broadcasting is one-fourth of her schedule and it's my full schedule. But she is certified to do these classes as well. So we expect if anything, it might, the net result but perhaps would be an increase to her schedule of more broadcast classes. And going back to what I said about we only have one TV studio. Well, this sports broadcasting communication class probably doesn't have to meet in the TV studio many times because they wouldn't be using equipment until after school. Maybe in class, we'd be doing podcast stuff and we could go to our, we could be in our pad podcast room and she could have an introductory broadcast class simultaneously over in the, in the TV studio. So that would require some logistical scheduling between her and I, but we do that anyway for other things. So I think we've got some room to grow into with her schedule before we were to hit the need of adding another person. But that's where we are right now and we have, yeah, we have talked about that to an extent.
I hadn't even thought about the physical space aspect of only having one studio. And the other thing, this will throw it, not that you can answer Heidi, but I, when I read this proposal, I said, boy, could we turn this into a community ed class? Because this, this would be exciting stuff to learn and granted, that's way out there. But, but it's amazing, some of these classes that we've offered, the forensic science, the broadcasting, these are exciting things. And, and not, not that we could answer that, but it, it's just amazing what we're offering to, to get people skills ready for what they need. So really do appreciate. And congratulations on all the awards your program wins because I know how much hard work you put into it.
Yeah, thank you. And I will say to that and to ON TV, people don't always realize ON TV is an amazing studio and they offer classes to the community to come in and use their studio and such and use their podcasting studio. And they're a great resource for community members watching this meeting right now that might want to tap into that. People don't realize how great of a resource we have here on Jocelyn Road in the Orion Center. ON, ON TV is one of the best public access facilities in the Midwest. And we have it here next to Orient Oaks, basically. So they're a great place to tap into for anyone that's interested in doing what you're talking about for the immediate future, Jake.
So I'm glad I asked the question because it's not, it's, it's available in the community and, and, and we have that, even if it's not through LO, LO, you know, community schools, it's in the community. So thanks for that, that insight.
Yes.
Others? All right, Roger, thank you for adding another facet to your already ultra-successful program. And we'll be looking forward to hearing more about this as you roll it out.
Great, thank you. Have a good holiday, everyone.
Same to you.
Thank you, Roger.
Take care.
All right, so we will move ahead to our communications update. And Mark?
Thanks, Jim. Basically, you know, the things that we've been working on really in these last couple of weeks is trying to share what's happening in the remote learning space with the community. I've been popping into, normally I can go into regular classes and share things physically. And now I'm able to do it remotely and we've had, I've been at all different levels, sharing, going into classes and kind of sharing what's happening in those classes with posts on our website. So definitely, hopefully everyone can go on and see some of those that have been happening and the different things that are going on there. In terms of beyond that, been helping Heidi with the bond stuff a little bit. We got some great pictures last week of the ECC. So if someone wants, if you want to go on our bond website, you can definitely see all the progress is being made. I'm sure Heidi will talk about that more, but it's really been a, it's really dramatic and so that's really exciting. And for the most part, you know, that's what's going on with communications. So any questions?
All right, questions for Mark? All right, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it. So move forward to public participation and Julie?
I would ask, we've got two attendees following us live right now in webinar. So if you're interested in making public comment, please raise your hand. And it looks like I have a Beth. I'm not sure if I'm going to pronounce your name right, Featon or Fighton from Oakland University. So I'm going to promote her to panelist.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Great, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to speak with you. I greatly appreciate it. My name is Fighton and I'm from Oakland University. I'm the Director of the Student Teaching Office. But I come before you today on behalf really of our entire teacher prep program. As you well know, as board members and central office employees, it's been very interesting in the field of public education. And as we try to prepare our teachers for stepping into roles, it's been a challenge for us as well. The reason I'm here tonight really is a thank you. I'm not sure as a board if you're aware that this past semester, Lake Orion granted 88 of our students a chance to participate in some level of field work within your schools. So not only are your teachers taking on the challenges of their own courses, but they've agreed to step out of the box a little bit and try to help mentor the next generation. So again, I'm just here to say thank you to your administrators and to your teachers. And we look forward to continuing all of our work with Lake Orion. Your radio broadcast teacher that was just here, I wish he had stayed on for an extra minute because here at Oakland, we also do broadcasting and maybe he'd like to do some university partnership. I could try to help promote that.
Be great.
So have him get in touch with me. I, Rick knows me and so Rick could pass along my contact information if necessary. But once again, I just wanted to thank all of you in Lake Orion for helping our students and helping create your pipeline as well.
Hi, Beth.
Hi, Rick.
Thank you. Hey, I think it's important too, Beth, to mention, and I'm not sure the board realizes this as well. Many districts opted to not take student teachers during this previous year or this, this year because of the difficulties that the teachers were having just adjusting. And we're one of those that decided to continue forward. So I was thankful that we could find enough staff members to take on the next generation of educators.
Originally, I had hoped to thank each of the teachers by name, but when I realized it was 88, I thought that be taking up a little more than the time allotted. But suffice it to say that you have many teachers willing to continue to work with us. So once again, thank you and I wish all of you a great holiday.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your comments and thank you for the relationship that has been a longstanding and ongoing relationship with Oakland University on so many levels with Lake Orion Community Schools. And this is just another demonstration of that. And we greatly appreciate the opportunity to work with you and with Oakland University in so many ways.
Thank you, Mr. Weidman.
Thank you. Julie?
I don't see any other hands raised, so I think we're okay to move on.
All right. All right, so we will move along to our strategic area discussion items and we'll begin with governance and superintendent's update.
Yeah. All right, thank you. We talked a little bit about the status of the legislation and legislators and whatnot. But COVID has certainly impacted the action items and whatnot. There's really two items out there. I haven't seen any updates today or yesterday, but there's the Senate Bill 1246 that talks to the Open Meeting Act and extending the ability to do the virtual meetings through March 31st of 2021. That, that is not, you know, hasn't been fully passed, but that's something that is being worked on. So stay tuned. That may or may not impact our ability in, in our January meeting. So we'll give you any updates that we get. And I know Burgett does a great job of giving timely updates as well. The other is a House Bill 4694 and that is a bill that would allow retirees to work in schools without penalty. Right now there's limitations once they retire and whatnot. But because of the shortage of subs, they are trying to come up with some different ways to allow, you know, people that are, you know, qualified to work with our students. That certainly would be advantageous to school districts because certainly our retired teachers understand what it, what's necessary to have successful instruction. So we'd love to be able to get some of them back into the workforce. So we'll continue to watch that closely. That's what I have for the legislative update. Is there, are there any questions regarding those two? Okay, if not, then I will move to the, the next piece here and that is the COVID update. I'm going to do a share screen here. Okay, so I'm going to work my way through this and so a lot of this is going to be review. I did just want to share that as we go through this on a monthly basis, there are some slides that I continue to have on there, just as quick reminders. So I will, like I said, work through some of this quickly. We will be asking you this evening to certify our December plan when we get to the action items. And we will also be talking about what our plans will be moving forward effective January 19th when we are slated to bring students back to in-person. I think it's really important to emphasize that we as an administrative team, we as educators really want to be able to bring kids back into in-person instruction as soon as possible. But we want to make sure that it is a safe environment. Just a couple of reminders on this slide, this is the information that we've been using and will continue to use for our decision-making. The second bullet point there, LOCs experiences, I'll talk a little bit about what we've learned with our in-person instruction and how we plan to improve it moving forward. I want to also mention the district boundaries, the information on the district boundaries. That is all on the website, but that is very important because that is our community. And certainly everybody has probably heard on the news about vaccine progress and time will tell what the impact will be about that. We have learned that educators are a second, second group to get the vaccine, have the option for the vaccine. So that, that may accelerate, you know, our, our ability to move forward. But again, only time will tell the impact of the vaccine. As far as the guiding data, I do want to mention, again, this is a slide that is shown on a monthly basis. So I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I do want to mention that with the OCHD weekly guidance, you know, we, we continue to have a great partnership. They did do some updates and we do have that on our website now, effective December 7th. So if you haven't looked recently about the quarantines and some of the different guidance, I would encourage you to get to the website and take a look at that. We did update on December 7th. MDHHS put out some, some different guidance for quarantines. So there is the option for school districts to change the quarantine timeframe to 10 days with some stipulations. That's, that's 10 days if the person has no symptoms. And then you need to continue to monitor that person to make sure that, you know, no symptoms come about. My understanding is that the days 11 through 14, there is less than a 5% chance of transmission. come about. My understanding uh, is that the um, days eleven through fourteen, there is less than a five percent chance of transmission uh, in those days. And that's uh, I think the motivation behind the CDC change in the recommendation that our state has moved forward with as well. Uh, I also want to mention, you know, it's going to uh, continue to be important, the, the testing results, the amount of time that it takes for um, test results to come back. Um, Oakland County Health Division tells us that, that it is improving. They have opened up um, you know, some other centers, so that certainly will help. And really a big key, you know, down here, this is the district, district COVID data per ten thousand that, that we talk about that we get on a weekly basis. Um, this green here, just as a reminder, that is where the district was when we went to in-person instruction. And then the sixty-five point four is really where the data was uh, when we um, decided to move to remote. And you can see um, that our community certainly uh, did reflect the spike that occurred uh, in, in the state of Michigan. Uh, right now we, we are at uh, one hundred and seven point five per ten thousand. Uh, so that is a slight improvement from the week prior. Um, my meeting yesterday with epidemiologists uh, made it sound uh, promising that we should see yet another uh, decrease this week. And that's what we need to continue to see. We need to continue to see decreases or maintaining. Uh, and certainly the fact that our community wasn't um, ravaged early on with the um, positive virus. That, that is part of the reason why we're being impacted so much now, uh, because we had a number of people that, that um, you know, hadn't tested positive. So certainly uh, we need to continue to see this number go down and at least maintain steady. But we are certainly looking forward to bringing students back on, on January nineteenth. I did want to mention in this uh, bullet area, the quarantines, positive uh, tests and transmissions. Um, within that, we use the Clear to Go app. We've talked a lot about that. Um, just want everybody to, to understand that we will be asking our employees to start. Um, I believe again, the week of the fourth, um, we're going to be communicating out that we're going to have our staff uh, start doing the Clear to Go app again. So that we have a solid understanding um, of who, who is and isn't being impacted by uh, positive tests and quarantines and whatnot. So as we get closer to that January nineteenth day, we can uh, plan accordingly. And in that same vein, we are going to ask uh, families to start having their students again do the Clear to Go app. Uh, again, that will help us understand locally what the impact uh, is going to be. There's a few things that we need there from, from others to do to help inform us as we move forward. So these next few slides really reflect what we've been uh, doing this past month. Um, this isn't a mystery to anybody. There's no uh, no new information here. It's just a reminder that this is where we've been. That we transitioned to remote on November eighteenth and we will be in a remote setting uh, through January fifteen, uh, twenty twenty-one. We, we have also been uh, doing the Dragon Virtual Program, which we again, will continue to do that through uh, January fifteenth. There's no change on that. I just wanted to remind the board that that is where we were at and we will continue to do that again through January fifteenth. So these last two slides really just, they reflect, you know, the programming that we've had. And this is uh, really what the contents of the extended COVID nineteen plan that you'll be um, approving or considering for approval tonight. Uh, the following slides uh, is information as far as how we want to move forward. So before I move to that, are there any questions about where we are right now in the programming that we have? Okay. All right. So I will move forward. Uh, as far as where we want to go, again, I can't emphasize enough that our goal is to get our students uh, that want to be in person, back in person, five days a week, all day. Uh, and we're trying to be really thoughtful and knowledgeable about the information that we've learned. And uh, to try to strive towards that goal, we need, we think that we need to make some changes. These changes have uh, come from uh, from within. We've gotten proposals from teachers, you know, we've heard from community, we've heard from um, our administrators, we've, we've gone up and down the chain and, and kind of put some of these ideas through the blender, so to speak. And, and we think we've come out with some really good ideas on how to accomplish these goals. And it's really important for us to have these three things. Uh, we want to have the safe and healthy environments, obviously, and we want to really be able to provide the consistent and continuous in-person learning for those that want in-person learning. And in order to do that, uh, we need to really minimize the context. And we recognize uh, and you'll see that we have some strategies and some planning that we're uh, putting into place that will help uh, so that we don't have the uh, issues of having to switch to remote uh, by classrooms, uh, schools and districts like we've had to do and so many districts have had to do um, across our county. So as far as our changes, we're looking at uh, effective January nineteenth. So again, uh, we will continue our plans through the fifteenth of what we talked about. These are the ideas, the proposal that we're looking at effective January nineteenth, when we bring our students back to in-person. Um, we have learned in our elementaries that the lunch, uh, the lunchtime really created some exposure issues. Uh, so we are going to uh, address that in the plan that I'm uh, going to propose to you this evening. We also learned that the specials instruction uh, created uh, exposure issues where we had one individual teacher that was going to multiple classrooms. And as you can, you know, kind of visualize that, if that person is uh, positive, then they have now uh, potentially transmitted and caused a quarantine issue for each of the classrooms that they um, educated during that day. We have staff associates that are extremely valuable to our operations. And those staff associates, uh, you know, they work multiple lunches. When you look at a cafeteria uh, in an elementary classroom, you'll see that uh, you know, the staff associates are having, having to help kids, you know, open up their bags of food and their milks and they're getting close to them and, and everybody's got their masks off because it's an eating environment. Uh, and so that really um, created some issues for us. And, and the, and the real blessing also is that we have eighty percent of our families that entrust us with in-person instruction and, and want uh, in-person instruction. But with that, it creates um, you know, close contact issues. So what we're look, looking at moving forward effective January nineteenth is we want to provide in-person instruction every single day with our students. And we feel the best way to do this is following um, is to have a four-hour and fifteen-minute session to start uh, you know, each day. So what that looks like is our early start elementaries uh, would begin at eight-thirty and they would dismiss at twelve forty-five. Uh, but they would do this every single day. There's not an alternating day here. This is every single day. And our late starts would be nine o'clock uh, till one fifteen. So you're looking at a four-hour and fifteen-minute segment of um, core instruction. What we would do to uh, continue to provide the uh, valuable nutrition that we do as a school district is we would provide grab and go lunches. Just like we had uh, at the high school, uh, and we also would provide breakfast. So what that would look like, I'll use a Monday, for example. Uh, students get done with their um, their session. They would have available to them a, a lunch as they did get dismissed. And also they would have the ability to have a breakfast uh, for the following day. So then they take that home and then on the Tuesday morning, they can have the breakfast uh, based on the food that they take home on Monday, uh, Monday afternoon. So the students would get home with their families uh, in that afternoon. There then becomes a remote opportunity. Uh, they can um, get into their accounts and they can participate in these specialist courses uh, that our teachers will be creating for them as well as some of the social emotional lessons that we'll be providing asynchronous, asynchronously, which means that they would do that independently at a time that works best for them in their own home. So there's a lot of flexibility there for parents. Um, they're great judges as to whether or not their children are ready to move forward. We do hear a lot about the screen time. Uh, you know, for our elementary learners and the flexibility, uh, I think we provided that with this plan. Our special education students uh, have IEPs and they have um, contingency learning plans and we'll certainly continue to follow those as we educate all of our elementary students. And then uh, recognizing that this is uh, you know, a challenge for families because we are looking at a shortened day. We are going to uh, start the SAC program back up. That's our before and after-school care. Um, and so we really think that that's going to help address, you know, some of those concerns. And we want to make sure that word gets out that that is available because it's going to be an important uh, element for some families. Any questions about the elementary before I move to the middle school slide?
Burgett?
Um, so Ben, knowing that the um, after-school care will be offered and that students have the opportunity to pick up the grab and go lunch and breakfast. They would then be, if they're going to after-school care, they would likely be eating in the after-school care?
Yes, yes. Yep, yep, certainly.
And that would be okay?
Yeah. So one of the things that we uh, saw as a challenge as we, as we learned in November was the, was the spacing. And so we would have, we would have larger spaces uh, to be able to spread kids out. Uh, and there may be students uh, with IEP or contingency learning plans also that would be still in the school during that point in time. But again, we'd be able to space out appropriately um, and be able to uh, support them as they move forward.
And the food service program is still um, um, a meal. Meals provided, I, it's a grant funded by the federal government, right?
There, wha- what I think you're referring to is that there was a waiver that allowed us some flexibility from, from the federal government to allow access uh, for lunches and breakfast for all students.
Right.
That is still in place, I believe, for the remainder of the school year.
And is this something that um, for the sake of the food service, knowing what they're doing or how many, how, how do they anticipate how many will be grabbed?
Sure. Yeah, there, there's a lot of organizational logistics that we um, I have been putting together uh, behind the scenes and those communications will be going out. In fact, um, there was a discussion today about how they're going to do that, but uh, families are going to be asked uh, to, you know, inform us uh, in advance as to whether or not they're going to be looking for that lunch and breakfast so that we can plan accordingly. Obviously, there's going to be some flexibility and some understanding. We're going to work through those things. But we will get those details out to families. Um, we wanted to make sure we get these uh, broad concepts out this evening so that um, so that families can plan and, and uh, prepare.
And then one more um, on, on this whole line. I, I appreciate the thinking outside the box with this schedule. Um, and I have to ask, because it's on my mind as we're talking about nutrition and food and the elementary student um, four hours, four hours and fifteen minutes, basically longer by the time they've come and gone from home. Is, is that reasonable to expect a child to be able to do that? Because clearly we're not going to be offering them a snack because this is the whole point, right? You're trying to avoid eating in the classroom?
Right. We are avoiding the eating in the classroom for the extended period of time. Uh, we do have a strategy in place for us to be able to do snack uh, in in the elementary schools. It will look much different than um, what a lunchroom setting was. Um, so we are looking to provide that. I don't know that we really want to get into the details of that, but we do feel as though it's going to be a safe environment. Um, but you're right, that is an extended period of time and that's the reason we feel that it'd still be um, you know, essential to do that. And we do feel like we can do that safely.
I appreciate your um, willingness to take that question. And to answer that, I know that physiologically, children aren't capable of going and for longer periods of food. And we all know they don't think well. So I'm, I appreciate that you've, you're already thinking about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And it, it's actually, it makes me chuckle a little bit. It's a, it is a very long stretched out snack time um, that we're uh, doing with this strategy. Um, but it is in a situation where we'll be able to space in um, not create additional exposure. So um, we do, we do feel good about that. It's a great question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ben on the elementary? Okay, I think we're good.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate you telling me we're good because I can't see any of the panelists right now. So that works. So as far as the uh, middle school lessons learned, um, there uh, there is, you know, obviously some overlap here, but the lunchrooms without masks uh, and the number of students, you know, again, we have eighty percent of our students that want in-person instruction. Uh, you know, so that means that we have a, a large number um, of our population that would, that want to be in school. And really looking at class sizes to allow better social distancing uh, is really, really important um, at the middle levels. So the middle levels uh, have, have worked hard to come up with some proposals. And this is the proposal that we feel really will work well. It looks very much like the high school. Uh, green days and white days, just for the sake of simplicity, we were just looking at um, you know, week one, what would happen for students that would be noted as um, on the green days. Monday, Wednesday and Friday, they would have in-person instruction. And then in week one, the white days, there would be um, asynchronous activities on um, uh, Tuesday and Thursday for our, for our green students. But the um, white students would have the in-person on Tuesday and Thursday. So it's the same format as the high school, um, where there is both the in-person and then there's the asynchronous activities uh, that happen on those alternate days when students are not in person. Uh, we will continue with the grab and go lunch and breakfast option. Uh, we again, feel that that uh, would really help minimize the number of quarantines and exposures and transmissions uh, that we experienced. And then um, important to note that this day two is, is shortened. So it's a seven thirty to twelve fifteen. Uh, and the middle school students will have all of their classes uh, when they are in person. And again, the special education students, um, their schedule will be determined by the, their IEP teams and their contingency learning plans. So a, again, a lot of similarities uh, with the high school. If you recall in November, we had four hybrid days that looked just like this. And then we had one full day. Um, the feeling in the full day was um, it was a cause for concern um, based on the previous four days. And, and we really feel like the proposal that has come to us from the middle level um, will address some of the things that we learned and it will accomplish some of the goals that we have set forward, uh, trying to be continuous um, in, in-person instruction. Any questions about the middle school?
I think we're good.
Okay, thank you. I'll move on to the high school and the learning options. Again, um, hybrid January nineteenth. Um, not uh, you know, not looking at uh, changes, but just reminders that, that we had the green and white days. We'll continue with that. And again, the asynchronous app, activities, the grab and go lunch and breakfast concept. Uh, daily schedule doesn't change. Uh, I do want to recognize that the learning options daily schedule is nine forty to two thirty-five. They will meet daily, uh, where, where our comprehensive high school students uh, will meet in this hybrid schedule. Our learning option students will meet daily. And in both buildings, the special education students uh, schedules will be term, be determined by their IEP or their um, contingency learning plan. So there's not, not really much change there at that level. Anything of, uh, any questions about that?
Okay. There are two.
Thank you. Uh, Pine Tree Center, we're looking at uh, daily instruction, eight forty-five to one forty-five. And, and again, the schedule will be determined by the IEP team and the cut um, contingency learning plans. Uh, important to note that this uh, time period, uh, the students in Pine Tree will have lunch. Um, because of the number of students that are in the respective programs, uh, we're able to accomplish uh, ten to twelve feet uh, between students uh, when they have the meals. So we feel like we can provide a uh, environment uh, that won't cause uh, exposure and transmission uh, issues. So we are looking for uh, daily instruction for our Pine Tree students.
Questions, Pine Tree?
I have one question. I'm sorry, going back to the high school and the middle.
Yeah, go ahead.
Kind of leaning on the same question that Burger was happening. We're still talking about letting these guys eat somehow too, right? Because I know that my, my high schooler's biggest hurdle right now, even being at home is with the way her classes are, she doesn't have time to eat. Um, so I can only imagine that if they're there. Um, as long as you guys are, that's on your radar, I'm cool. I don't need a.
Well, Scott, I would say it's on the radar, but I, I also would say that at the middle and the high school, um, I do not believe in Heidi, feel free to interject. I do not believe there is um, a planned snack time like there is in the elementary. Um, the nine forty to two thirty-five um, shortened day uh, on Wednesday is something that has been uh, in the community for quite some time. Um, but I, I don't believe that there was any intentional uh, snack time planned for the students. That doesn't mean that they wouldn't snack between classes or something like that. I guess I, I guess I can't say that they would never do that, but Heidi, I don't know if you have anything to add with that, your knowledge with the discussions?
Yeah, there, it is not scheduled like elementary is. A scheduled snack time throughout the day.
Really, when you look at it, I, I mean, I could see your concern, especially at the middle level because they are, you know, coming in a little bit earlier. And that's definitely something we're going to have to, you know, keep an eye on. Um, but that is, that is where we are right now. But thank you for surfacing that.
Burgett surfaced it. I was just repeating it.
All right. So Pine Tree Center, uh, I feel like there, that we are finished with that. So I'll move forward to early childhood. Um, not a lot to share here. So I'll move forward to early childhood. Not a lot to share here, other than we are looking to resume January 19th. Really looking forward to that. And then also just a reminder that the SAC will be available at each of the elementaries starting January 19th, and our early childhood program is the one that, you know, basically staffs that. And that is how we would register and we would be communicating out to families how they register their children, if they're interested in that program.
Questions? Any questions? Yes, Burger?
Just to clarify, because that, that's pretty, pretty brief statement, the program will resume 119. That's, you're saying everything early childhood is back to normal?
Yes, we are, we are planning to move forward January 19th. I'm not sure of any, any program deviations from that. Again, Heidi, if you want to interject, I, I don't believe there's any deviations that are working.
At this point, no, barring anything, you know, unknown at this point.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Jake, did you have a question?
I just, I know you, just to make sure it's stated. So transportation, we're, we're, we're moving a lot of our traditional times. So will this, will this extend the day for our transportation staff? Because they're going to be transporting students, you know, seemingly at all their sorts of different times. We have high, you know, middle school starting at 7:30 with school starting until 9:30 for the high school. And then they're, they're getting out as soon as 12:15. So i- is that going to change that model a whole bunch?
Absolutely. So one of the, one of the huge, you know, constructs and pieces with this is that we did need to figure out, okay, if we started an elementary at this time and middle, you know, when can we dismiss, when can we start? So huge piece of it, what'll end up happening is our drivers will have a lot more drive time. They won't have as much downtime. Their, the need for them would be definitely higher. So, you know, being on the finance committee, you're probably thinking, you know, there's some incurred cost here. And yes, there definitely is going to be some incurred cost. But we, we do know that it's cost that is important to incur so that we can get our students back to in-person as much as possible.
And how about the loading on buses? Well, I mean, we, we had the chance for a few weeks to do, you know, all, at least one week, we had all the levels running at the same time. Was that successful in terms of, you know, the, the headcount and spacing and such things on our buses?
One of the things that we really worked hard to try to do and, and we had some time to do it when we switched the remote. But the creation of the seating charts was really important for us. Families were awesome about doing the Clear to Go app. And so that's all part of getting on the buses. So there definitely were some, some learning points. And I know that transportation worked through some of those, some of those items. But we did feel, you know, pretty good about where we were at with transportation. And again, there, there were not as many kids on a school bus that you normally would have during a normal year. But as the, as the time went on in elementary, we started to pick up more and more ridership as families got more comfortable and whatnot. So yeah, the spacing was something that was intentional with the seating charts and that. The community is going to see buses all day long, you know, once, once we get started. As you can see, they're going to be dropping, picking, dropping, picking regularly. So, but yes. Ben, if I could just make a couple of comments to Jake's question. We will not see a significant increase in hours. What we've done is just reduce the time in between, the dead time, if you would, where they would make morning runs. They would have a two to three hour window where they would leave, go home, do things and come back and do their afternoon runs. So we haven't increased the number of routes or changed the amount of time of the routes. What we've done is shrink the time in between. All right. So Dragon Virtual, again, the Dragon Virtual, just as a reminder, the commitment at the elementary level was for the entire year. Those students who are currently enrolled in Dragon Virtual at the secondary level will have their selection window for second semester will be January 4th through January 8th. So they have a one-week window. And we tried to make that as late as possible and still be able to schedule. And so that's why we're doing it when we're doing it. It'd be easier and better for us as a school district to do it before the winter break because it gives us more time to, you know, manipulate schedules and everything. But we felt by doing this the week after, it would be better for families that are looking at COVID data and exposure issues and whatnot. So that's why we are doing it when we are doing it. And again, that's for students that are in Dragon Virtual, their choice at the secondary level. It is their choice as to whether they want to maintain Dragon Virtual or if they want to participate in the in-person option for second semester. The choice that they make is for the entire semester. And as far as the Dragon Virtual, we will continue to use the Edgenuity platform at the high school. And one of the things, you know, we, we have learned some, some things and some of the families that have chosen it have recognized what asynchronous learning or the differences between asynchronous learning and in-person and the remote. And there is a, there is a stark difference. Is families are adjusting to the style of curriculum, the type of curriculum that the Edgenuity platform offers. What we are going to have all of our students do that are in the Dragon Virtual in the second semester, they're all going to be assigned the module for Edgenuity orientation, which is important for them for, you know, managing the program and some strategies. But a few of our teachers are putting together a podcast that we're going to also make a required, as a required assignment for all the Dragon Virtials. And in that is they're going to, they're going to be addressing what are some successful skills? If you're going to be in an online setup, an online program, because the skills that are necessary for in-person instruction and sitting in the classroom and note taking and things like that is definitely different than a, you know, an online experience. And so students, you know, haven't always transferred those skills successfully because they don't work in a virtual environment like they would in an in-person environment. So we have a couple of teachers who will put, have put together, I think it's 10-minute podcast, somewhat humorous. It'll be an easy watch and, and kind of get the message across to students about some little things they can do to be successful. And we'll certainly continue to provide a mentor for those classes. And I, I can't emphasize enough, you know, those that are choosing the Dragon Virtual, you know, we, we understand and respect your, you know, your option and your reasons for moving forward with the Dragon Virtual. And we just, we really want to be able to support families. And we need to have you reach out to us when there are challenges, to reach out to that teacher mentor, to reach out to the administrators of those buildings. They are the difference makers with, with our students. And we have our family school connections and our counselors and, and all of our support staff is still in place for Dragon Virtual students. So please make sure to, you know, reach out and ask for help if you're in the Dragon Virtual program and it's not feeling, you know, the same as what your experience normally is when you're in in-person instruction. So as far as moving forward, I wanted to make sure to share these plans, you know, this evening. You know, I'm looking for the, the board to give the authority to move forward with these plans for January 19th. So we can communicate to families as early as tomorrow so that they can start, you know, looking through the options. We would communicate out the details, you know, more detail than what was in this PowerPoint. You know, some of the how-tos and the whens and some specific dates and times so that they can make those, those decisions and arrangements. I can't emphasize enough, we do recognize that this whole year has created a lot of, you know, flexibility angst. You know, we're, we're constantly trying to improve to make sure that we can provide the in-person instruction. We feel like doing what we're doing is going to get us to a consistent level of in-person instruction. And then all day, every day is what our goal is for our students who want in-person. And we're going to continue to strive for that. We're going to be looking at the data. Again, I don't have one metric that I'm looking at that says, once we get to this number, I'm going to feel totally great about it. But we do need to continue to see improvements with the COVID data within the community. Our operational ability to move forward is going to be very important. But we do feel confident with us coming back on the 19th in-person that we're going to, we're going to be full tilt and going to run some successful programs and we're going to get all our kids back.
All right. Thank you, Ben. Questions? Overall questions about the plan? Mary Jo, please.
Hey, Ben, I know you touched on this at the last meeting when you discussed the goal of January 19th. I've been seeing a lot of interesting things on social media about why you chose that date. But I'd like you to reiterate, why did you choose January 19th?
Well, January 18th, if you look at, and keep in mind, when we, when we chose that date, we, we were looking at the quarantine guidance. And I will say that CDC continues to say 14 days is optimal, but that they do, they do allow a 10-day as long as you continue to monitor. So if we look at the first, which is probably, you know, the last time that people will come together, gathering and whatnot, you go 14 days beyond that, you're at the 15th. The 15th is a Friday. And so that would be a logical start-stop point. So then you look at the following Monday, we had a scheduled day for observation of Martin Luther King Day. So we obviously weren't going to bring students back on, on a day that we weren't currently scheduled in recognition of that holiday. So the 19th became the day to come back. It is also the final week of the first semester. So it does allow our staff that administers, you know, final exams to do some things that they wouldn't have necessarily been able to do in a remote setting. So it really worked well for us.
Thank you. So it has virtually nothing, well, actually nothing to do with any other political things that might be going on later in that week?
No.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other questions? Yes, Burger?
Ben, I just want to clear it, make it clear for myself and for anybody else listening that this, the presentation, what you're asking for us with this new information, that's for you to move forward and allow people to plan ahead. Tonight, what we're reapproving is the current plan because that goes until the, your new plan begins. So what we, in our approval, what we're required to approve every 30 days or so is still the current plan. And that's what's spelled out in our current COVID learning plan.
Right.
Tonight's plan will be what we approve next month, but you're preparing with families, families and staff and students. And that's what we'll approve then in January.
Yes, we will, we will have in the extended COVID-19 plan, everything I just mentioned, you know, January 19th moving forward. We felt that very important to share that information with families here this evening so that they could plan accordingly. Our next board meeting is January 13th, so we certainly didn't feel it fair to, you know, un, you know, show these, show these plans with such short timeframe.
Absolutely.
That being said, if I can interject here, I think it's important that the board without voting or without adopting next month's plan now, that we affirm that this is the direction that we want to point toward, barring some significant change we're unaware of, that this is the direction we want to go. And I would be looking for that affirmation from the board. Would, would there be any objection to this?
No objection at all.
Okay. All right. I just want to be clear on it so that when we do talk about it in January, that we are consistent with what we're talking about tonight as a board. And it sounds like everybody is fully in support of this. I, I will say, for me, anything that gets our teachers and students back together face to face is a step in the right direction. And I appreciate the creativity that's gone into this to address the pinch points and the possible problem areas, hotspots in the, in the old plan and address those and work around those so we can begin that process of getting back in the classroom together. So I, I really appreciate all the thought that's gone into this. And I know it, it's been a combination of work between administration, our teachers, and even feedback from our parents. And so I think it's a, it's a great first step. Others? Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Ben, for that. And is there anything else you want to add at this point?
No, I think we've covered it well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So we'll move on to Policy Committee Report and who will handle that tonight?
We didn't talk about that in the Policy Committee meeting. There are only a couple, a couple of brief updates. The first that I'll, you know, we can speak to, it's the compensation. So as was mentioned in a previous board meeting, the IRS audited during the annual audit. And one of the things they focused on was board member compensation. So the policy, the bylaw that we had before called out $599 stipend to board members. And the IRS's claim is that's not expense reimbursement for incidentals. That, that, the expense reimbursement doesn't work that way. It needs to be specifically notated. So they wanted to deem that as compensation, which, because we would be employees. Under state law, board members are not allowed to be employees of the district. For example, we can't be teachers, we can't be staff associates, et cetera. So that's not possible. So in discussing it, the Policy Committee is recommending to the board to remove the compensation and make that retroactive to July 1st, 2020. Because the way it was being paid was in two installments each year. We did get an installment for the first half of the year, but we are recommending to make this retroactive and not receive the installment. The reason being is John has been working towards a settlement with the IRS, which is only a few hundred dollars is, is our slap on the wrist for, for this. But it, it takes us through the, the last fiscal year, June 30th, 2020. So if we were to be compensated for this period, that was six-month period we're in right now, we would be opening up a new issue with the IRS. So that is why the committee is recommending to adopt a policy that has no stipend, but does allow, as we have before, for actual expense reimbursement with receipts, including miles, if it's board business.
Okay. So that's, that's pretty clear cut. Are there any questions? This would serve as our first reading on this policy tonight.
The only thing I did want to mention on that, and Jake provided the information that he was aware of. John did just learn that the, the fine the IRS was going to share, gonna levy against us as less than a hundred dollars through his work. So it is less than that, just so you know.
The incredible, the incredible shrinking amount. Way to go, John.
All right.
Well, just, just to be clear, Ben, they brought it down to 319 from about 2,600? Oh, it's way down.
Yeah, that, that was the number that he, I wasn't aware if there was new news. But they wanted to have all sorts of fine. And, and basically John talked to them and said, there shouldn't be any fines or penalties because there was no, there's no, there was no intent to defraud or do anything. It was just the way it was. So, and we're not employees. So John worked that settlement down.
And, and just to add a couple of things to that, one, this amount has been the board's stipend for decades, for decades. Maybe three decades that I'm aware of. And the stipend is, is relative to other boards around town. There, this is a very small stipend. There are boards that receive more compensation than that for now. But I wanted to ask John, just to touch on what was behind this very briefly and, and how it landed at Lake Orion's doorstep and how it's going to land at other doorsteps.
What I can, what I gathered from feedback and, and conversation with the, the agent, they're stepping up their procedure, their procedures in terms of reviewing school districts across.
they're stepping up their procedure, their procedures in terms of reviewing school districts across the state, we assume across the country in terms of things along this line. Now, they actually did an audit of our entire district, so they looked at things like our four oh three B plan, all that stuff. This was one of the issues that came to their forefront in, in conversation. The agent had mentioned that several other districts, you know, in the state, in the same situation. So in my mind, they, they're, they're looking for something specific, but they're coming in with an overall look with a few targeted things. So in that context, the, the solution here, going to a more formalized reimbursement process, takes the whole issue right off the table from what they found. And they're, and it's going to be, we, we appear to be on the forefront of that. I know they're dealing, or they're working with another district in our, in our county. And they're about a month behind us in process. And based on conversation, it's going to be fairly widespread.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Steve?
Thanks, Joe. Just a comment for the public. I know the board knows, and our teachers and cabinet, and of course, Mr. Al Kirby. For the public, the stipend, the word stipend, they may assume it's some kind of compensation. Technically, I guess it is from the IRS point of view. But it's given back by the board members, believe me, in many ways, whether it's a donation to the Lamp of Learning, donations to the golf outing, or whether board members just refuse it completely and just give it right back. I just want to make it clear to anybody who may interpret that in a different manner. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Jim?
Thanks, Steve. Any others? All right. So this will function as our first reading on this policy tonight. And then Jake?
And on the next one, Ben, put you on the spot a little bit, but this, it's the one about remote work, but, but there's a, you can provide the background better than I can. So I'll let you speak to why we need this policy to be adopted.
Yeah, in, in short, MyOSHA has implemented some policies during this pandemic, and they have Neola has provided this policy as a requirement to meet those MyOSHA standards. We are fully adopting or proposing that we adopt this policy that MyOSHA has. We added, or that, I'm sorry, that Neola has to reflect on the MyOSHA policy. In short, what it says is if our people can provide work remotely, that we would allow them to work remotely. We do have in our policy that we basically analyze somebody's request as to whether or not they can work remotely. And, and then that comes through the HR office. And so that's what this particular policy is about. It's about remote work during the pandemic.
Okay, thank you. So this is served as our, our first reading again tonight on that one. All right, any questions about either one of these? They're pretty straight away, pretty clean cut. And, and we're compelled to take action on both of those.
And then the fact, the final thing is all board members will be getting, we, we discussed this. We'll be getting in a, an email from Julie about our organizational meeting coming up. And we, we agreed that you'll have the ability to put in comments about not just which officer position you might be interested in, but also which committees you might want to serve on. Instead of just checking boxes, you can put a few words behind that.
Okay, thanks, Jake. Nate?
Yeah, just a spur of the moment thought, thinking about the comments that, that Steve made and Jim, you made about the duration that the stipend has been in place. It, it got me thinking, I know in the Lamp of Learning, the ongoing pursuit of making sure there's funds. I don't know if we've considered, is there a way to make an annual donation on behalf of the board? If the, if the financial amount is something the district has been comfortable with, and it's really an accounting and an IRS thing, might be something for the board to consider that in lieu of that, that money is allocated to Lamp of Learning is just an annual thing, just to kind of spur them on.
That's a great thought. That's a great thought. We should have discussion around that. Thank you. All right. So when we adopt that policy after the second reading, we may want to have a, a chat about that concept. That's, that's a great idea. All right. So we'll move on here to the M A S B Board of Directors nomination. And let me just say that I'd like, this is something that's come to us from the M A S B. There's an opportunity for a board position to be filled from our region, if I have that correct. And I'm going to turn this over to Burgett for a moment. Burgett has expressed interest in being nominated. And I think she would do a tremendous job of representing not only Lake Orion, but this region of the state on the M A S B and the board. And with her experience at both the county and locally, I think she brings some great perspective there. But I'm going to ask her to speak a little bit about the process so we can understand what's involved here and what action we, we need to take.
Thank you, Jim. So tonight, in your board packets, Julie included several documents regarding the M A S B Board of Director position and the process that's involved with that election. As you can see from the paperwork in there, M A S B has the state divided up into regions. We happen to be in region eight, and a part of that region is Macomb County, Wayne County, and Oakland County. And the, that tri-county representation gets one representative. And the seat for that is currently up. It's been filled for several years by a person from Macomb County. As you all know, most of you on, on our board have supported me on this in the past. And I've learned a lot from running for that and not being successful in those endeavors at what it means to run and how political it can actually get. And so I've been encouraged by many people now from my involvement on the county level at such an in-depth level to pursue that. And it's for many reasons that I'm going for that. And it's, I'm really after maintaining the integrity of board work in our state. I would very much like to be a voice representing our region on the M A S B Board of Directors in, in doing that. And so I'm asking you tonight, the only way a person can move forward with a nomination is for their home board of education to nominate them. And then that nomination, Julie will help me fill out an online form that has to be submitted to the M A S B Executive Director, Don Roach Truba, by January thirteenth. But that's our first board meeting next year. So it has to be before that. So we can have it submitted by then. So that left us with tonight. So that's why it's on tonight's agenda. So I, I appreciate your attention and that you would consider entertaining this for me one more time.
All right. Yes, question, Steve?
Just a comment, and we're very blessed and fortunate to have her get to be able to apply for this role. I know that we were all with supporter. Just an example, I was telling Mr. Taylor this several months ago. My son, Mr. Kirby and I went to a dinner meeting. Miss Forget, Miss McQuistock was so well known by everybody. She was there two hours before the meeting while my son and Mr. Kirby and I left during the meeting. She was there two hours after. She's known, respected. Just for her to come from Lake Orion is a big honor for our district. And I believe she'll also encourage other board members that have come on to participate. And she's a good leader and educator. And I think you forget, you have my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Mary Jo?
Hey, Burgett, I just had a question. When are the board meetings? And I noticed in the paperwork that they talked about other like committee work or other things that everyone would have a responsibility for. I guess my only concern is that it doesn't overlap with our local board meetings because, you know, that, that's always our first priority. So I just wanted to, to know about that.
Absolutely. They actually don't meet very often. And the, I've already been serving on the Resolutions of Bylaws Committee from M A S B. And there are, Board of Director members are required to serve on those committees as well. So I've been serving alongside some of those committee members. So I, I know that it already works with my schedule, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So thank you for asking that, though. I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, just because the, the last, you know, when I was on the board last time, we almost ne- never changed our board meeting. It was always the two Wednesdays. And I think our constituents look forward to the consistency so that they don't think we're trying to do anything under, you know, the radar or anything. So I just wanted to make sure there wouldn't be anything that would conflict where we'd have, where you, sorry, we, you guys would have to change a meeting date multiple times because of other conflicts. So.
It should not, that should not interfere at all. Thank you.
And I, and I don't think that's something that we would want to entertain. But I know that M A S B is very sensitive to local school districts activities and tries to work around that in every case. Other questions? All right, we'll, we'll take action on that very shortly. We'll move on now to student achievement and assistant superintendent update. Heidi?
All right. Good evening. Couple of things this evening. The ThinkLink partnership is in your packets. As you know, we have a great partnership with the Orion Township Library. This would have been coming sooner in the year. However, you, like everything else this year, different timelines. So I have had the opportunity to meet with the library twice via Zoom. And so you'll see on the document that is provided in your packet, we are attempting to carry out pretty much most of everything that we typically do every year. However, obviously, some of the things will be carried out in a different format or different way because of COVID. However, I just want you to know that we still are continuing with our partnership. And there are many, many resources that the library is continuing to provide for our district. And we are still continuing that partnership. So in fact, I was just talking with Kathleen this week from the library. And we will be doing a book study once again for parents in March. So that is another area that will be coming out very soon. But we, we really are pleased and, you know, honor the relationship that we have with the library. All right, couple other things. We had a book drive recently. You know, every year we conduct a book driver, drive. Well, this year, we had more books than any other year. Probably people are cleaning. And so Kate D'Amio spearheads the book drive every year. We had several coaches, instructional coaches that helped her. And it was from four to seven, nonstop. So continuous cars. And now we have mounds and mounds of books that our instructional coaches will be sorting through. But many thanks to the community. Again, it is, it's just been overwhelming. This has been the largest one that we have seen. So thank you to everyone who cleaned and looked around their house for those books that are no longer being used. We will put them to use. Speaking of that, Kate also spearheaded, you know, a month or so ago, I brought you that on Wednesday evenings, there would be an opportunity for students that are in the Dragon Virtual Program, elementary students, to go to Stadium Drive Media Center and get books, trade in the books that they have. The response for this has been so overwhelming that Kate has summoned the rest of the instructional coaches. So now we have a team that is working to make sure that our students are rotating their books. So the last time that we did this, which was, well, it's going on tonight as well. But this past week was well over a hundred families. So they come in at different schedules of times. They're able to select books. And some are also able to just pick up curbside. But this has been an extremely well-received resource. And like I said, we've had to pull in more support. So Kate's, Kate's rounded up the troops. And so that's very exciting. And I'm, I'm really happy that our kids are reading. That's very evident. And our parents are making sure that the students are getting, getting those books. So I just want to point out many thank yous to our instructional coaches for that. Well, Carrie did it again. We have been awarded another grant. This one is for the amount of eighty-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars. And this grant is to help us fund additional intervention instruction for our elementary students. So this is actually the tenth M D E grant that Carrie has secured for Lake Orion since April of two thousand and sixteen. And so the total amount that she has secured thus far for the district is six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. And six hundred, yeah, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars and forty-five cents. So many thank yous to Carrie. And that will certainly provide additional resources for our students, which will obviously come in very handy. And then Parent University, we continue, as you know, to hold events regarding Parent University. And our attendance has been sporadic. It, you know, that we are doing it obviously virtual. So we are having, you know, a small amount of people attend live, so to speak. However, these sessions are recorded, recorded and then posted on YouTube, which that's where we're seeing a large amount of people who are viewing the videos. So this has actually been one of those, I think, silver linings or good things that's come from the pandemic where people are able to access this information at any time, as many times as they want. So while we're not gaining as much live experience through, you know, virtual, we are seeing, we are tracking the amount of people that are actually viewing the videos. So that's been good news as well. Okay, and then switching over to Bond World. Someone had pointed out, I think it was Mark who mentioned, we recently took a tour of the Early Childhood Center. It is so exciting. There are, it's come so far. And so we are planning for the board to have a tour sometime in February. But it was just wonderful to see paper plans actually come to fruition. So I'm really excited for you to get a tour of that building and see everything coming together. We are still on track for an fall two thousand and twenty-one opening. And so again, very exciting. The other thing this next week, we will be receiving some of our secondary pilot furniture. And so we just received word this week that different shipments will be coming in over the break. And so some of our students come January nineteenth, will be coming into classrooms of new furniture that they will be testing out for our secondary furniture pilot. And then beginning in January, we're going to kick off series two of the bond. And so the projects that are lined up in that series are scripts, the second part of stadium, and then Blanche Sims. And obviously, as you know, Blanche Sims will be a very big project as it's a new build, very similar to the process that we went through for early childhood. And so right now, we are working together, design committees for those groups. Stadium, that design committee will stay on to complete their second part of the project. And then Blanche Sims, Mark will be putting out some information regarding Blanche, Blanche Sims Design Committee shortly after break. I will need a, a board member for both scripts and Blanche Sims. So if you will think about that and, and let me know, again, I'll need one for scripts and one for Blanche Sims. And Burgett is staying on to serve on stadiums. So I think that's all I have.
Yes, I'll try that again. Questions for Heidi? Yes, Scott?
I'll do Blanche Sims.
Somehow I had a feeling you'd want to do Blanche Sims.
There you go. Burgett?
Heidi, I have a question, and it goes back to the library ThinkLink pages. And I noticed that, and it's logical, I understand from the Lake Orion Community Schools objectives, it's crossed out that we will add a bus stop at Orion Township Public Library on a bi-weekly basis for middle school students after school. I understand why that's crossed out, but can that come back again in the future?
Oh, that's, yes, this is only a one year, but we're not doing it this year for obvious reasons. That was typically, if you remember, we had a middle school That was typically, if you remember, we had a middle school program that we ran after school. And that was, we had several students that participated in that every week. So yes, we will be looking to do that again. It's just obviously that we can't do it this year.
Just making sure. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Heidi? Yes, Jake.
Yeah, Heidi, the secondary furniture pilot, is that scheduled to run the entire second half of the year?
It's, yes, the second half of the year and then beginning next fall.
So, okay, so the furniture, because my concern is if the, if the students weren't for some reason not able to come back on January 19th, it wasn't like an eight week pilot. So we were going to miss out on a, on key evaluation time. We'll have more than enough time to get it evaluated, even if for some reason the students can't come back.
Yes, because they're, they're doing two pilots essentially. They're piloting two sets of furniture. And we'll be starting in January, going through probably spring. Again, I'm monitoring that and then that timeline is going to be flexible depending upon exactly what you just said, Jake. How long, right? Students are really able to test it. That's the students are the ones that are, you know, giving us the feedback and obviously the ones that we're making sure that this furniture is going to work for. So you know, the, the elementary timeline did get thrown off a little bit with COVID. However, we were able to pick it back up and get right back on track. So we're really paying close attention to the secondary as well. Hoping that that doesn't happen, but we do have a little bit of wiggle room. But that's a key piece. And you know what? If something should happen, God forbid that, you know, that we're, that, you know, kids aren't able to test it like need be, then we would be extending the timeline. This is not a decision that we're going to rush into. Lots of money. We're going to have this furniture for a long time. So we need to get it right.
Thank you for letting us, giving us the what we of course would hope to hear because we are, we're investing the community's money and we're going to get it right.
Okay. Other questions for Heidi? All right. Hearing none. Thank you very much. And we will move on to the curriculum committee report, and I believe the curriculum committee met last Friday.
Yep, we met. Yes, that's right, Jim. We met last Friday and we discussed several things, including the new course proposal, which you all had the privilege of hearing Roger present this evening. We also heard a technology update for Carpenter and Orion Oaks and essentially they both have received their smart boards and their audio enhancement equipment systems. Teachers have been trained on these and other buildings will be get, getting the same resources during their construction periods. She also discussed with us January 18th professional development planning. Plans are in motion for a main focus on cultural diversity along with social and emotional topics and executive functioning skills. Then she touched a little bit about looking ahead to fall of 2021. The teaching and learning department will start to plan for fall beginning in January. Two big projects will include a virtual program for fall 2021, along with a more robust summer program to address additional needs of students due to the pandemic. These minutes are in our consent agenda that you will be approving, but we also acknowledged one more thing in our meeting and it was that it was Nate and Mary Jo's last curriculum committee meeting. In fact, it was their last committee meeting. So they didn't seem very sad about it either.
No tears. All right. Thank you, Burgett. So we'll move on to human resources and assistant superintendent update, Rick?
Yes, thank you. No new hires this, this board meeting, so I'll save you that, but I do want to share with you, it's not in your board packet. I just received it today from Superintendent Dr. Rice, speaking about the reduction in enrollment across the state. And I know I gave you the enrollment presentation a couple of board meetings back. And I'll hit these real quickly and not take a lot of time and we will make sure that you get this memo. But the state of Michigan, on average, for the last 10 years has seen a reduction annually of about 13,000 students. And this year alone, that number has increased to 53,000, which is 307% increase. We're out, the state across the state, we're also seeing 13,000 less kindergarten enrollment. So that falls right in line with what we're experiencing here. And they had an increase of 14,000 families who have registered and that all do as homeschool for this year. So obviously this is hitting everyone across the state. We do take it very seriously and we will continue to monitor and figure out what it is we can do to ensure that we are minimally impacted. But I just want to share those numbers with you and the community because it is a significant issue across the state. And we're not, I, I believe personally, we're fortunate to not experience it to the same level that many districts are. And that's all I have for tonight.
Okay, thank you, Rick. And I think this is something that is going to be impacting every district across the state on an ongoing basis as we work our way through this whole process. And I think you hit the nail on the head that we're fortunate relative to the entire state as to the minimal number of students we've lost relative to some other districts. Move on to superintendent evaluation committee report and superintendent evaluation committee met with Ben and in your packet tonight are Ben's goals and you are familiar with the process that we've gone through previously with superintendent update, superintendent evaluation and you'll find on here Ben's evaluation goals for this coming year. And it is a shorter list than we are accustomed to because by the nature of how we're conducting business this year, our first and foremost issue is how we navigate the waters with the challenges we're facing. So these strategic plan areas are plugging into that overarching operating challenge that we're facing. And you, you, I'm sure you've all read those over. We'll be using that as our roadmap for evaluation. And in addition to that, in there is the superintendent evaluation process with dates and our next look at this will come in February when the evaluation committee and superintendent will meet once again as a touch point. It's an informal look in on how we're doing on those goals and the work plan for the year. And make sure that we're all in agreement and we're all moving in the right direction and making adjustments as needed. Then the evaluation process will go on to April where the board will receive the tool, the evaluation tool and will conduct the evaluation processes we have in the past in May. Superintendent and board meet in closed session. We have discussions. We complete the evaluation process in May. And then the presentation is, is made in June with the superintendent in closed session, then our final recommendations in the public meeting at the end of the school year. So that's the overview. And we'll continue to discuss this as we go through these dates in our evaluation process. But it's important to know that we have touch points along the way. And this is not evaluation process. It's not living. We take it step by step and we we remain engaged with our superintendent as we have in the past and we're doing now with Ben to make sure that we're, we're all in agreement and we're all on track. Any questions? Yes, Mary Jo.
This is really well done, I might say, compared to, you know, back in the day. I just, I love the format. It's very easy. I wonder when the new board members come on in January. Are they going to get this right off the bat, like in a packet when they do their orientation?
I, they may have already received it. Have they Julie? Was that part of their orientation or Ben?
No, they had, they have not received it. They, they will, I'm meeting tomorrow morning with Danielle. I'll give that to her. We'll certainly make sure to get it to Susan as well, so that she has that.
Cause you know, when, when the new board takes over in the middle of a school year, it, you're basically jumping right into this. I think for them to kind of know what's coming down the pike and be able to ask.
That's a great idea, Mary Jo.
Thanks.
Thank you. Others? Yes, Jake?
Um, just have a few questions about this because honestly, I have not been through this before that we all remember. We got to be honest with ourselves. We didn't do this with Mary in her last couple of years. So my question is this, this is for the fiscal year, so we tie it up in June. Is it common practice to go into the new year with goals so that the superintendent evaluation committee would start setting the goals for next year? Or is it more common practice to wrap this up in June? And then once the new year starts, then start setting the goals for the next year?
What we've done in the past is we've concluded this process and then be prior to the start of the next school year that superintendent will bring forward the plan for the year. And Rick, if you refresh my memory, I think we did that in August in the past, didn't we? Is Rick there?
Yeah, I see. I'm not sure, I'm not sure about the past, but what, I guess what I would say is a lot of the work that we do, my, you know, myself and the cabinet is, is tied to the strategic plan. And so, you know, we know that the strategic plan is something that we will be addressing. A local district can decide when the evaluation, like the whole timeline, and that's what the committee and I came up with was a timeline that worked well for this year. It's always something that can be changed. There are some districts who in December do the superintendent evaluation because that's when outgoing board members and new board members come in. And so there's just different ways to do it. You know, I certainly can't speak to the history, but there is a lot of flexibility to it, but the strategic plan and the validity of the strategic plan and the work that we're doing is really what drives the work that we do as superintendents and cabinet members.
And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ben, but you, you would be providing your work plan to us using the strategic plan as your guide?
That is correct. So if there's adjustments to the strategic plan, if we go through that process, we decide to go through that process, that may alter, you know, the timeframe of, of all the reporting and that, that we have created in our time, in our process. So yes, that does drive it.
Okay, great. Other questions?
Another question I had was it, I have to flip my screen over. It appeared that we had a goal and an objective. But the question that I have, and this would be coming from the corporate world, we use the acronym SMART. So a goal is specific, measurable, achievable, relevant and timely. And it has the criteria that says, how, how do you meet this? So that was my question is the measurable aspect against these. There, it allows for provide regular communication to the community about the district that, that could lead to, you know, different expectations of what that goal means. So I guess that's my question is is everybody on the board comfortable with the lack of a better term, specificity of these goals?
Well, and that, that did come up in our conversation around this, Jake, and that this lack of specificity was driven in part by the nature of what we're going through this year. It was an abbreviated form that would be expanded as we go into the next year. But that's a very good point and that was discussed by some of the members of the committee.
And I appreciate that that is the response that it was, it was considered and the need for flexibility instead of being too specific
Right.
is important.
And that was the thinking behind it for, for, for right now. Others? Okay, hearing none. We will be back with you with updates as we move through the process and we'll make sure that our two new board members get up to speed on the process. So they're aware of how we conduct this and appreciate Mary Jo touching on that. So we'll move on to my thing jumped back here. We'll move on to business and finance and assistant superintendent update, Jen?
We're going to move on to the fun stuff now.
Please.
Tonight, there's, there's three, three items to, to review and discuss. The first is the budget amendment for this fiscal year, fiscal year 21. And before you go into more of the detail of what is driving the wide range of changes, I want to kind of repaint the picture of the timeframe and what was going on last May, last June, when the final amendment was put together, which also drove into the adopted budget for this year, all under the umbrella of a whole lot of uncertainty coming out of the state. So so from that point of view, as you know, we did approve the final amendment and for last year and the adopted budget in June of last year. And a big driver there was information related to what's known as the May, what we call the CREC. It's actually the consensus revenue estimating conference. And at that timeframe, the school aid fund was showing a billion with a B billion dollar deficit, which translated into roughly $600 or a little more than that actually operator, $600 plus foundation allowance cut that would be required to balance. As you know, the school aid fund and the state law requires the school aid fund to be balanced. So the state does that by reducing the funds they send out to the locals via the foundation allowance. So when all of that was hanging up in the air and we were putting these budgets together and planning with the expectation of a $600 per pupil cut coming down the pipeline, the final amendment was approved, incorporating that $600 cut, which led to, and you know, on the budget for last year, expectation of a multimillion dollar operating deficit. And then at the same time, shortly thereafter, we passed the fiscal 21 adopted budget with five, roughly $5 million in budget reductions, balancing the cuts that we just seen eating fiscal 21's final amendment. So when all of that went through in the process of making all those changes to balance the budget, literally every function department area in the district in the general fund encouraged major, incurred major reductions in that adopted budget process. So fast forward to the end of August 2020, when the state had another closer chance, they did an additional special credit or consensus revenue estimating conference to take another hard look at the school aid fund. And what they found is that it was not nearly as bad shape as they had thought it was going to be the prior May. So what that translated into school district world is that we were reduced, not $600 per pupil, but the equivalent of $175 per pupil, roughly, roughly 1.4 million. And that hit our budget and our funds, our financial situation. We recognize that at, at the end of fiscal year 20, which was this past June. So because of the fiscal year timing between the state's year and our year, meaning their fiscal year ends in September and ours ends in June. When they announced the, the reduction of the 175 per pupil, they also announced that there's going to be, for in our case, in our district's case, a little over 2.6 million in CARES Act funding coming our way. And 1.4 million roughly of that was, was a replacement of the cut that they took out of the prior year, our prior year budget that 175 per pupil. So with this all being the backdrop and the timing issues as a district, we were required to recognize the reduction in fiscal 20 and recognize the 2.6 million in our fiscal 21, even though it was all occurring in the state's same fiscal year. So it was Even though it was all occurring in the state's same fiscal year. So it was, you know, it was all good for their their books and their management of the process. It made a big timing issue for all the local districts. So and what it resulted in, you know, in terms of that timing, it it created the need and the adopted budget to come up with. Based on the knowledge from what we knew in May and June, the budget that now was not nearly in a bad shape, but was approved as being five million dollars being cut all across the board, getting every function. So now. With that as the backdrop. And getting to specifics of the fiscal year amendment. In front of us tonight, it is the first reading. It's fiscal year twenty one's first amendment. Um, the budget reductions that were made to to summarize that were made basically in the adopted budget. And approved in the adopted budget. Are basically, for the most part, in this amendment being reversed. Um, the funding process that state had come through. And the timing of it and the and actual conditions that the school aid fund actually resulted having in. Were were much better than the sky is falling approach that was being communicated last May. So in that context, and then you add in the the ongoing coronavirus issues, that is where we're at with this amendment. So. Um, as a result, we we impacted, we changed in this amendment. After analysis of how things actually did land. In the result is a whole lot of reversing of the actions taken in the adopted budget. And so so just to give you a flavor, the kinds of things that were. Being deployed for the adopted budget to deal with a perceived five million dollar problem. So everything from from what we did in terms of a directed Georgia hiring freeze, that that was addressed and lifted because there wasn't the need. Because it's the sky wasn't falling on the budget. So we had planned multiple furlough days across all functions across the district. That didn't need to to be forward moved. Um, these kinds of things, many plans, position reductions, those didn't need to be executed. Or the vast majority at any rate didn't need to be executed. All of this in a very long. Um, winded answer explanation as to why there are so many all across the board adjustments in this budget amendment. It's really picking up the pieces from what was perceived to be a uh a problem. That was the adopted budget was addressing. What and the problem, of course, did not develop as it was being reported back in May. So this is now the fix or the restructuring, so to speak, of what was dismantled basically in the adopted budget. So and then add into that, there are several other new expenditure line items, basically throughout multiple functions, again, throughout the general fund particularly. Related to COVID nineteen, all the expenses associated with dealing with the situations, much, you know. Through the through the discussion review that Superintendent Kirby had done earlier tonight on our COVID planning. The first wave of decisions and things that were done many months ago were were we needed to buy as much PPE products we could get, cleaning products. Um, HEPA filtered machines, all those kinds of things, abilities to uh do do multiple cleaning processes, all those things. So all those budgets are now identified and incorporated into this amendment one. So. So along with those, then there were federal source revenues that we had to recognize officially in this amendment as well. When I say federal source, I really mean the CARES Act money, which is federal money. The bulk of it came directly from the state to us. We are receiving about another, a little under a million via the county. But it's all federal money just coming through different routes. So that's recognizing of the federal source revenues. So if as you're looking at the write ups on the um the document that's in the board packet, it's roughly three point six million dollars coming into the district from the federal side of things. Whether it's the state or from the county. Um, a couple of other changes, the 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 impact that the that the virus has had on the districts and the operations in our in our community service and child education groups and enrichment programming. Those programs are all fee for service based. So those those operations have been pretty well, for lack of a better word, operationally devastated from a financial point of view. So in the general fund, we normally receive about two hundred fifty thousand in operating transfers in into the general fund coming from those programs out of the community service fund. As a means to help stem some of the damage in those in the community service fund, those transfers were removed. And those, I call them transfers in, they're really um those, the community service fund program is paying the general fund back for overhead costs the general fund provides for them. Um, if the technical name that's used in the the state code, school code work is called an operating transfer, and that's why I refer to it that way. So that's another two hundred fifty thousand dollar issue on the revenue piece change. And then several others, um, other revenue lines and some other expenditure, just in general, just a smaller adjustments that occur normally, naturally. Um, the the one big change that did not occur in this amendment, because we met, we met, we weren't notified in time, so to speak. Is our section one forty seven C funding that we get from the state related to the retirement um situation in the state. So that's the one that they send us the money in and then turn around embellish for. Those changes will show up in the final amendment. That amount is increased by about a million dollars, from what I understand. Um, compared to last year, but it isn't in and out, so it'll have a relative net zero impact on the fund balance. So from a general funds uh fund balance point of view, its budgeted fund balance was changed. Um, from a very low base start for the from the adopted budget to this amended budget, that again reflects the assumption of a six hundred dollar foundation allowance cut that was anticipated through the adopted budget and actually the final amendment from last year. So that so that actual final amendment, there the in the this amendment, we do, we now recognize a starting fund balance. That's higher in the general fund, so therefore the general funds ending fund balance after all the amendment one changes are applied. Lands at eight million, three hundred thirty four thousand, two hundred ninety nine dollars. That's roughly nine point eight percent of the fiscal twenty one proposed budgets expenditures. So we're roughly in the same place that we started fiscal twenty at. Which was the goal of a piece of the goal of some of the CARES Act funding, the way the state was trying to protect the local districts. Relative to the craziness and the funding associated with our Corona coronavirus COVID world. So. So in that context, some some specific detail numbers, and I'll try to read these quick and just to open it up to questions. Um, our first revenue, the the first amendment revenue budget now will be, or is proposed to be eighty six million, nine hundred sixty nine thousand, seven hundred ninety eight dollars. That's got a seven point seven million dollar increase in from the adopted budget. The seven point seven million dollars, the two biggest pieces are recognizing that the state aid itself, the the six hundred dollar per pupil reduction did not occur, and that's roughly half that seven point seven million. And the other rough half is the new federal money coming in. So that the seven point seven is a big number that's being changed, but it's really being driven by two big pieces. So we did the local could be increased and local source revenues about a two hundred fifty thousand dollar increase. That's a uh a reflection of the um what we now expect in terms of our local property operating tax for by the end of fiscal year. So that's up about two hundred fifty thousand on over a little over eight, eight point four million and change. Um, so again, in the state source piece, the big piece was the change in the state aid. And the um other operating revenue reduction of two hundred fifty thousand, I touched on a little earlier too. That's the piece about that's the operating transfer in that was reduced to take some uh pressure off the uh community service fund programs. So the fundamental expenditure proposed budget, expenditure budget is eighty five million, four hundred sixty thousand, two hundred ninety two. And it contains a net increase of six point two ma- a little over six point two million in the total expenditure budget. Like all the federal grants, there's for the most part, there's an offsetting expenditure, the CARES Act different grant. It's a little bit difference, different than the normal recognition of a federal grant, because there is no one for one recognition, because there is one point four million roughly built into that amount to pay back the district in this fiscal year from what was reduced last fiscal year. So in effect, it does have a roughly one point four million, actually proposed budget here is a one point five million operating surplus in it. But that is really being driven by that CARES Act refunding of the money reduced last year. So from that perspective, I would be more than happy to uh address any questions related to budget world. Um, we did make some changes in some of the other smaller funds. That's that we normally do. We'll probably make a few more changes by the time we get to the end of the year too, once we understand the 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 exact specifics that's are we're going to be seeing as this year develops. So at this point, more than happy to address any questions?
Questions for John? Yes, Mary Jo.
John, one really quick question. Um, under the revenue budget changes portion of your report. You were talking about significant changes that basically by definition is anything that changes by more than a hundred thousand dollars or more. I'm just curious, is that an industry standard or something that's decided locally? Cause I was, it's interesting that it's a dollar figure and not a percentage. So I was just curious how that came about.
It's a it's it's a best practice standard, but the actual dollar amount is established at it, you know, by district, by organization. Um, I've always used that figure in my career. Um, so it's really something that probably came along with my experience. Um, and really, the way we landed in the past on that number is that um ninety percent, ninety five percent of the significant change occur falls within that range. Now that said, the the remaining ten or ten percent or five, ten percent is usually made up of a whole lot of real small changes. So in terms of actually focusing on the um material change, that's where that figure kind of gives a basis of starting.
Thank you.
Yep.
Other questions? Yes, Bergen.
Well, that was a lot of good news. I will give you that. And I was desperately trying to follow every little bit of tidbit that you threw in at us. And I I do need some help with some clarifications, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, you referred to the fact that we we budgeted for a six hundred dollar foundation allowance decrease.
Correct.
And that didn't turn out to be six hundred. It turned out to be only a hundred and seventy five. And did that trans, but that then you said somewhere along the line that that was offset by another something else, a one point four million?
Yeah, that the the two point seven five or excuse me, the one seven five hundred, hundred seventy five dollar per pupil reduction. Calculated out to roughly one point four million reduction. And we recognize that reduction at the end of fiscal year twenty. So last year. Um, as you saw on the financial statements last board meeting. The 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 driver of that deficit was that cut.
Okay.
The actual deficit that we resulted was less than one point four million because of other um cost savings across the board, whether it was utilities and other things that did not happen because we were shut down with COVID.
Yeah, so many things. Um, we're going great until COVID. So. I'm processing, sorry. So um, I will say one, one thing that is just outstanding is that I know it had originally been projected a fund balance of eight point one percent at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty. And it had been nine point three percent at the end of fiscal year nineteen. But now, according to your paperwork, it's nine point eight percent. Is that correct? Cause that's outstanding. That is like the best news ever. But I wanted to ask you, though, um, in all of this, and some of its increase, increase or increase and decrease because you took an increase to put into community ed funds. Some of this is CARES money and and they come with a lot of strings attached, right? So um, it was very specific as to what you could or couldn't do with those dollars. So everything's still flushed out in the end here for everything to.
We have been, we have been working, and believe me when I say that, working extremely closely with Plant, Brand, our audit, our audit, um, sir, our audit agents. As well as MSBO and as well as some people at the um, the MDE as well. Um, the whole, the whole CARES Act identification process of in in compliance process. It's um the most unusual I've seen in my career. Um, if you remember the IRA money from ten, twelve years ago, when we had.
I remember.
That meltdown. The that those funds came with a tenth of the strings and the way they framed it. The pro- the biggest challenge of the CARES money is the way they originally framed it. You have to use this money in the timeframe that crossed two of our fiscal years. And then late in the game, US, the US Treasury came out with clarification. That basically said, if you are spending in terms of documenting and compliance purposes. Up to five hundred, the first five hundred dollars per pupil expenses. They came out with a very reduced, very um lowered standard in terms of what you need to document. They they made it easy, they they in that regard. But along the same lines, because of everyone's experience in our world with the federal world. We've all worked with our auditors to identify and be very clear, um, documenting. These are our compliance plans, expenditures and so forth that ties to this money. And the reason I say that is because a lot of the expenses that's used to, on the compliance side of the ledger. Occurred in last fiscal year. So that's that's kind of the point I was trying to make earlier is that the money actually came in and we were, the state told us to recognize it in this year. Even though, so I mean, it's the most unusual year I've ever been, had the pleasure to work with in my financial management point of view, and I hope it's the last one like I ever had the pleasure to work with.
I believe it's the word of the year, and that would be unprecedented, right?
There you go.
So, um. You used a term, operationally devastated. And and that, did you use that in to reflect community edu?
Yeah, the um. Our enrichment programs and the vast majority of our early childhood programs are are fee based, tuition based. So if there's no programming, there is no tuition. The issue that's caused the biggest challenges that some of the strings attached to this funding. Required a timing difference of and how to handle the the paying, not paying, furloughing, laying off. All that kind of management piece that comes right down to the whole programming. So there was a timeframe where our expenditure world was not matching up to our revenue generation world. So we burned fund balance to maintain the other in order to stay compliant with the bigger picture from the state. So I I do believe without a doubt that the issues, financial issues of the the early childhood and childcare programming and the enrichment programming are specific to the events of this year and come June, May, whenever, whenever a pandemic is declared over and wh- whenever that timeline goes and we get back into relative normalcy next year. And particularly get the new childhood center up and running. I do not think we will have any financial issues from an ongoing operational plan forward. Um, it's just getting through this timeframe and, you know, the cash, the cash burn associated with it. There was a little bit of just bad luck to the the food service fund. We had a reasonably, that's a very healthy fund balance. Healthy enough to the point where the MDE would call and say, hey, you got to spend this money. So we spent this money on a project and used up half that fund balance and then COVID. From a timing point of view, that just couldn't have got worse. So. But we did force me to have a solid fund, a fund balance in the other two programs, in the community service fund. Which has carried the bulk of the show, but it's going to get, it's going to get a little rough here as we close out the year. And as we get back into our, the spring run, and I'm hoping that we get closer to a a normal school year. And that to me includes a normal childhood programming. And I don't want to over describe it. I'm sure Heidi's probably got a better um grasp in terms of the actual student programming, but in my mind, if we get some normalcy back as we move into the second half of the year. That means the funding piece and the operations will get back to normalcy too.
So community at enrichment services, the community educational services, um, the semantics there. They're just kind of laying low, basically, um, until they can function again. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, we've been in it and maybe Heidi, I mean, if you want to touch basically, even when we came on back online for the the month there, they they did a little bit of stuff. I can't can't recall the specifics on the the early childhood side, but again, that's back down because of our current pause.
Right.
Got a fair statement, Heidi?
Yeah, we're doing as much as we possibly can when we can do it.
And and John, when we held that for that brief period of time, I think it was called Dragons Den, was that considered community services?
Yeah, that was operated out of that fund as well.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
Others? All right.
Okay. Uh, the next item on the agenda in my area is the uh uh, the request for board authorization to approve a resolution to allow the district to refund a bond. Um, if you recall, the twenty thirteen energy bond. Um, that was a general obligation, general fund, meaning non-voted bond. Um, it has a, and that was issued in twenty thirteen. It has a twenty twenty three call date built into it. But because the rates are so low and the way the math works now, we can do an advanced refunding. It's because we're doing a taxable model, we're still allowed to do those. Um, that's the driver behind this request and and this um in in terms of refunding that bond, where the expected savings will reduce to. in, in terms of refunding that bond, where the expected savings will reduce the overall cost of just about a half a million dollars taken out of it. It's, it's not a big refunding, it's really about 3.7 million-ish all in. And to save about a half a million over the structure, the biggest savings is coming from really a combination of the interest rate environment and a restructuring of the bond itself will be reducing its life from a 2023, 2033 maturity to a 2026. And in doing so, save a half a million dollars. And so I mean, regards to the net present value piece of the analysis.
Okay, questions for Jen on the refunding? Pretty straight away, like saving money.
Yep.
It's great.
And the last piece we got on, on the agenda, it's a bid award, the operations department is like, like our bus transportation world, we have a, a vehicle replacement plan and usage plan in the operations department. It's been off track for a while. And we're trying to get something in place that will provide a vehicle that's much needed in the area. We came across a cooperative deal, actually, we're, we're piggybacking off Oakland County's cooperative pricing through, well, you know what, I didn't write down the dealership's name. It's a dealership that's incorporated in the Oakland County contract. And it's providing a pricing that is relative to the vehicle that's selected for the best use of the, of the district. The pricing is the, the, one of the best pricing sets that we've seen on that kind of a vehicle in a long time. And it's also including the specialized plow setup. We have in the past acquired used vehicles. When we did a quick review of what used vehicles were that were relatively still new in that category, for the dollar differential between the two, we decided to go after and go forward with a request to purchase a new vehicle based primarily on the, the pricing, the strength of the pricing relative to the number of years that we figure we'd get additional because it is a new vehicle. So with that, any questions on, on the bid authorization request? Bid award requests?
About the vehicle purchase? All right.
When do you get it?
Once, oh, Wes already called me today. He, he wanted to make sure we're on, you know, we're, we're on the agenda tonight, so yeah, we're on the agenda if, if the board awards it. He's probably going to be calling tomorrow to get things going, so.
Sounds good. All right, thank you, Jen.
Thank you.
Move on to finance committee report, Jake, do you have anything to add to John's report?
Just a little bit, because we, we did meet on Monday afternoon to, and the primary purpose was to discuss the budget amendments that John reviewed. But we did touch on going forward and what, what means for future years. So one of the points that, that we came with is that if there are anything where we can save money this year to even have a higher fund balance than the 9.8% projected, because strangely enough, this is going to be, this projects to be our best financial year that we're going to have in the next few, because there is over $3 million of federal money coming in that we don't anticipate the federal government continually giving, you know, CARES Act money or coming up with new legislation that does that. So you'll, so in there, we looked and we said, we're down four, about 400 students this year or so, but our total expenditures are up to 85 million. So there, there is quite a bit of expense that we're incurring. So we just had some discussions about that and they said that, you know, the expense lines for Dragon Virtual versus, and some of the staff that we've hired, they will be going through and, and doing all that. So before we come to June and we get a, they'll do their planning in February, but coming to us as a board to approve a budget in June. But just giving a, a bit of a heads up that there's, there's quite a bit of work. So we, we made it through this year, but that, that's not to say that, you know, so what we're looking at in the future in front of us is troubled waters, if we, if we, if we want to use that term. So we, we, we had a little bit more discussion about that and are comfortable that, you know, Ben and, and John and, and the, the rest of the cabinet are addressing those issues.
Thank you, Jake. Questions for Jake? All right, so we'll move on. Scott, facility liaison report.
There's no report.
All right, thank you. So move to action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
A move that we approved the following consent agenda items. Approved payment of the November bills in the amount of $6,650,624.31. Approved minutes from the November 19th regular, November 12th bond committee, December 3rd superintendent evaluation committee, December 7th policy committee, and the December 11th 2020 curriculum committee meetings. Also approving the Head Start coordinators report.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie?
Sorry, I was trying to unmute myself with the wrong mouse, I've got two computers going here. Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yeah.
McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion to approve the consent agenda is passed, we'll move on. May I have a motion to approve the extended COVID-19 learning plan update?
A move that we approved the Lake Orion Community Schools Extended COVID-19 Learning Plan Update for December in compliance with Public Act 149, Section 98A, as presented.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. Motion to approve the extended COVID-19 learning plan update is approved. May I have a motion to approve the MASP Board of Directors nomination?
Yes. I would move to approve the nomination for Ms. Burkhart, McQuiston, for the MSAB Board of Directors, Region 8, as presented, thank you.
All right, is there support?
Support.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes, thank you.
Do I call Ms. McQuiston for this one? I'm not sure how that works. Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes.
Thank you.
And the motion to approve MASP Board of Directors nomination passes. May, may I have a motion to approve the ThinkLink partnership agreement?
A move that we approved the ThinkLink partnership agreement between Lake Orion Community Schools and the Orion Township Public Library as presented.
Is there support?
A second then.
Thank you. Julie, please.
Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The ThinkLink partnership agreement is approved. May I have a motion to approve new sports broadcasting courses for the high school?
A move that we approved the high school new course requests for sports broadcasting one and two as presented.
Is there support?
In my best sportscaster voice, yes, I have support.
Thank you. Right, Julie?
Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
It's out of here, yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yasu, yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, yes, yes!
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The new sports broadcasting courses for the high school are approved. May I have a motion to adopt a resolution for the 2021 refunding bonds?
I move that we adopt the 2021 refunding bonds, limited tax general obligation resolution as presented.
Thank you, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
Yes.
Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The motion to adopt resolution for the 2021 refunding bonds is approved. May I have a, a motion to authorize the bid award for operations vehicle?
A move that we authorize administration to purchase a 2021 GMC Sierra 2500 HD heavy-duty pickup, heavy-duty pickup truck with a naphide service body and a Western V plow from Todd Wenzel Buick GMC, using the Oakland County bid price in the amount of $46,120 as presented.
All right, thank you, is there support?
I support that.
Thank you, Julie, please.
Last vote, Ms. Burkhart?
Yes.
Last vote, Mr. Buckey?
Yes.
Mr. Dracos?
I'm sorry, I cannot vote or comment on this based on a conflict of interest, thank you though, Ms. Ockel.
Is that an abstention?
It is, Mr. Weedman, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Ms. McQuiston?
Yes.
Mr. Singer?
Yes.
Mr. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Weedman?
Yes. The bid award for operation vehicle is approved. So we move on to recap and next steps, Ben?
All right, thank you, I recognized two items. One is that I, I want to make sure that we review the possibility of a lamp of learning donation from the district and the board member compensation, want to look into that. And then also want to make sure to provide the evaluation goals and timeline for the new board members. So those were the two items that I identified.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, closing comments, Rick, you want to lead us off?
Sure, just to thank you to Mary Jo and Nate. Mary Jo, I didn't get a chance to know you very well, but I appreciate the fact that you are always so positive, a very upbeat person. And Nate, thank you for always challenging us to, uh, thinking, uh, think about things differently or look at them from different perspectives. It's much appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Heidi?
All right, well, I would have to ditto what Rick said, Mary Jo, I've worked with you for many years, it's been a pleasure again. Hopefully you come back and we do know where to find you. And Nate, same with you as well, I know that we'll see you out and about, you've always been a huge supporter of the schools and, and we've always appreciated that. So thank you both for your years of service. And I wish everybody a wonderful break and happy holidays.
Thanks, Heidi. Jen?
Well, ditto, with everything that's been said, but I do want to, I do want to personally thank both Mary Jo and Nate for, for your commitment to public ed as well, and particularly a commitment to Lake Orion schools over the years. And it's, it's been a pleasure to work with both of you, thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Ben?
Thanks, just wanted to wish everybody happy holidays and, and certainly, you know, with the winter break coming up, I really hope that staff and families can get some much-needed rest away from Zoom and Teams and, and those types of things. And Nate, Mary Jo, you know, thank you, you're both definitely difference makers. I feel compelled to share with the message that was given to each of these individuals in the appreciation card that was sent on behalf of the district, so the rest of the board members hear it as well as the community. But for Mary Jo, the message to Mary Jo was, looking at you, I understand what the volunteer, what volunteering is all about. You care so deeply and you step up to support the things you believe and regardless of the personal cost. You stepped into this vacancy knowing that it was a unique time for public education. Thank you for being an inspiration to us all, we appreciate, appreciate you serving the district again and continuing to make a difference in the community. And then as far as Nate, I, I would be remiss if I didn't mention that you really rocked that mullet back in the day. So I appreciate being there much. And then also, the message to Nate on behalf of the district was, unity of passion and compassion is a rare gift, but it shines in you, you approach your position as a board member with both, and that makes you a genuine and dedicated volunteer. Thank you so much for your tireless dedication. So just on behalf of the district, we really thank you for your service. And, and thank you for being part of the community and then we look forward to seeing you all down the road.
Thank you, Ben. Steve?
Thank you, Jim, to my fellow board members, both of you have received my thank you cards. But Jim, I'm always upbeat, but sadly, I wrote this up, I don't want to get emotional. Sadly, I wish to acknowledge that Mary Rogers from the Lake Orion Lions Club and a great supporter of our schools with the food basket program and scholarship programs passed away recently, Mr. Weedman. Our sympathies for her family and the Lions Club, she will be missed during this holiday season. A new special academic scholarship fund will be created in her honor and for our school district. Thank you, Mary Rogers.
Thank you, Steve. Bergen?
Thank you, um, I want to give a shout out to the leadership class and all the work that they did in helping get food donations, helping organize the school buildings to get that accomplished in a, in a really difficult time. And so I was unable to join the reception, virtual reception for Mary Jo and Nate. But as everyone is keenly aware, tonight marks the final board of education meeting for Nate Buckey and Mary Jo Burkhart. I want to take a moment to personally acknowledge your work, dedication and devotion to Lake Orion Community Schools and express my sincere gratitude for your service. Earlier tonight, the Oakland County School Board Association held a meeting and a part of the OCSBA welcome to the newly elected trustees included a time of honoring all outgoing trustees in Oakland County. Nate and Mary Jo, you are a part of that recognition. Now, can you see that? In all, there were 44 outgoing trustees with a combined 379 years of dedicated service to Oakland County students and communities. The two of you account for 17 of those years of service here in Lake Orion. Nate Buckey, in your four years as a Lake Orion Community Schools Board of Education trustee, you have made a clear and indelible impact. You joined the board in January of 2016 and quickly became a part of our board team. Your incredibly positive attitude, energy, quick wit, and affinity for facilitating some important group discussions became part of our work as a team. Your legacy in the district includes being a part of the creation and passage of the 2018 bond, being a part of approximately 60 board meetings, you served on six different committees over your four years, and maybe about 50 committee meetings in all of that. Serving on a board of education during a pandemic, being a part of a search for and hiring of a new superintendent, and being a part of a very unique group of alumni who have served on this board, but most importantly, impacting the education and lives of thousands of students. Thank you for all you've done in these four years, Nate. Mary Jo, your willingness to apply for and then receive and accept the appointment to finish someone else's term is something for which this board will always be grateful. How lucky are we that you were willing to put your board hat back on and step into the role of Board of Education trustee in the midst of a pandemic with a new superintendent and in an era when board work has been difficult at best? With your experience, you were able to transition into your position seamlessly and serve with incredible grace. Thank you for serving when your board, your school district and community needed you. We are so grateful. They say wisdom is knowing what to do next and that virtue is doing it. Nate and Mary Jo, you each determined that you would serve on the board of education and you accomplished that. You now move on to other things and we wish you well, but I want to remind you, once a dragon, always a dragon.
Thank you, Bergen. Jake?
Yeah, so people who know me know I'm a big sports fan and one of the things I like about school board service is we're a team and that's, that's straight from the state constitution that the seven of us don't have any individual authority. We only have authority as a team. So for both Nate and Mary Jo, I had got to know them through, from teams in the past. So Mary Jo, when she was on the board, I knew who she was, but I got to meet her as part of the 2013 bond team. And she taught me a ton about school board, you know, school finance, but, but what serving on a school board really means and put that bug in my mind that said, I had always thought about that, but she may not realize it, but that was encouragement that, that, that got me started. You got me involved in those things and got me started. And several years later, I ended up deciding to, you know, to serve on the board and running. So I thank her for that because it just shows what an impact you, you've had on people throughout this community through the years. And then as teams go, Nate and I served on, on a team years ago. Let's see if I can share this photo. Can you guys see that? Can you see? I tried to share my screen. Did you guys get to see that or not?
There you go.
This is more mullet pictures of Nate Buckey and, and me in the, and me in the back in our high school glory. So Nate and I had been teammates before and I truly appreciate when we were teammates back then, but now, because when I first came on the board, you know, Nate made sure, you know, he'd only been on the board a couple of years. So he knew what it was like to be a new board member and made sure that I was always doing okay. Am I, am I, am I coming along and understanding things that are happening? So it was great to have him as a teammate again, as I did over 30 years ago.
Thank you, Jake. Scott?
First, I could thank John for working us through this whole budget nightmare that hopefully we never ever have to deal with again, but gladly it came out kind of rosy on the other side. I'd really like to thank Mary Jo. It's been great to know her. I met her a little bit actually during the same bond campaign that Jake was talking about. I remember seeing her at, at barn days and talking to her for a while. And then we ended up becoming Facebook friends and having some discussions, but then once we had a vacant post, as soon as I saw her name on the list, I knew that she was, she was the right person for us and it was, it was a very thankless time and a very thankless position and we all truly do thank you. I'd also like to apologize to Nate for kind of getting him into this whole board member participation. Four years ago, when we had some vacancies, there didn't appear to be a whole lot of people that were running. So I, I might have fibbed to him a little bit and told him that, you know, it was totally necessary that we needed him and he had to be on the board. And after some discussions and some gentle prodding, we came up with, with a few, you know, huge goals. One of them was for sure a sinking fund and one of them was a bond, to name a couple of them. And we accomplished those. So I kind of had a feeling that he wasn't going to run again because we accomplished those goals. But I think that he was a huge, huge asset in our passing of the sinking fund and passing of the bond and opening our minds up to, to different ideas and different ideals. And I really appreciate everything he's done for us, done for the students of Lake Orion, and I just want to thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you, Scott. Nate?
Thanks, Jim. I know it's, I know it's late, but I think I'd be remiss if I didn't share a couple of, of thoughts and put a little structure to it. And I don't know, Julie or Ben or Jim, is it okay if I share a screen?
Absolutely.
Couple of minutes. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and, and do that. When, when we had the chance to, we should see something that says a bright future, I think, right?
There it is.
All right, cool. First of all, thank you for the time before the meeting with the, the chance to talk and hang out for a few. That was, that was really special and great. You know, when you have a chance for a transition like this, it gives you a chance to not only look, look backward, but also look forward a bit. And when I thought about the, the accomplishments, not only of the last board, but of the, the work that even preceded that and Bergen, you summarized that really with the detail that is so you, the number of meetings and that was, that was fabulous. But it gives you a chance to stop and pause. When I think forward about, you know, cabinet and the board that's going forward, it really is a chance to think about a bright future and an important moment. And the important moment being you all are the group of people that are going to lead not only through the remaining stages of a, of a once in a hundred year, hopefully pandemic, but also through the thing that happens next. And transitioning from crisis leadership to growth and thriving into that environment is, is something specific and it's something deliberate. And it takes some very, very planful forethought in order to do it exceptionally well. And I have nothing but confidence that you all will do that well. But it gave me a chance to reflect and say, what are some of the things that would be in the, looking out the front window, looking forward through the crisis and through the thing that happens next, how we move from crisis to growth. And I collected some of those thoughts kind of looking back and looking forward and I wanted to take a minute to share, to share those. So first and foremost is, is community and culture. The community includes all of us and now more than ever a focus on diversity, equity, inclusion, making sure that the voices and perspectives of everybody in the, in the community, regardless of income, age, ethnicity, gender, whichever demographic we want to look at, making sure that we're actively seeking and including all those voices. It really has been a pillar of success, not only of the board of the, but also of the district to engage the community and really build that culture and keep it going. You know, it's kind of quaint to think that we used to have in one of our communication goals, a discussion about should we have coffees or not? And how frequently? And now you're like, oh man, wouldn't I, what I wouldn't give to have a cup of coffee with somebody, you know, in person right now. And whatever that equivalent thing is to reengage and recreate community and culture coming out of an incredibly trying time. I don't know what the solution is, but the, the, the dynamic or the need to figure out what that is. And it's pretty, it's pretty well grounded in the experience that a lot of us have had, especially with when we were able to get community support at the ballot box. One of the key things that we learned from that is I don't know how it looks in other communities, but in our community for sure, when we would engage in a conversation, it was frequently met with skepticism, sometimes with criticism, but when that was complemented with a little bit of education, it almost always turned into support. This community supports the work of the community schools and they are in it together. And after short conversations and, and taking the extra effort to engage people, it brings out that dragon pride almost without fail. So community engagement was the, was the first one that I, I had kind of looking out the windshield. The next one was appropriate funding and advocating for appropriate funding. You all know I work with a lot of businesses and sometimes in, in, in business conversations, you talk about things outside of work and I would share that I'm, I'm on a school board. And it was really quick that you would frequently hear, yeah, schools should run more like businesses, right? Shouldn't schools and government run more like businesses? And I see some heads nodding. Others, I'm sure have heard that as well. But what was really interesting is when you asked a couple of questions after that and say, yeah, okay, run like businesses in what way? In the impact on the customer, in transparency, in fiscal discipline, in creating a winning culture, in engagement? What way should a school act more like a business? Because if you look at what the schools do, it is phenomenal, that aspect on it. And one thing is also true is that the things that are happening in schools are incredible on their merits and they're even more incredible when we're looking at the finite and inadequate amount of resources that are provided relative to the challenge. And the facts bear this out. We saw that last week when the auditors shared the slides of the money flow versus the expenses and there's just not enough to balance that equation. Now, some people will say money's not the answer to the problem, but it certainly is the significant aspect of public education, not only in the state, but also in the country today. Now, I grew up, my father was a, was a career educator. You know, he's, I had two working parents, so that was half of what fed our family. I'm also married to an educator. And I can say from personal experience that I've watched a generation plus educators who have been forced to work with a scarcity mindset. They've been forced to work with a scarcity mindset and driven by insufficient funding. How can we do the best with the resources we have versus flipping that question? And flipping that question around to say, what is the impact we could have if we have the resources we need? And then how do we get those resources? And there's a real opportunity for us, not just for the next board and for leaders in education, but there's a real opportunity, especially coming out of COVID, to flip that question around because COVID has certainly proven the enormous impact that public education has, not only on its core mission to educate students, but also on society. It is a bedrock and an engine of our country. And imagine what's going to happen when we can flip that question around. Now, it's difficult, but the call to action is to really be loud and proud and educate those around us to understand the opportunity that sits ahead of us when we switch that question and when we get the right advocacy and the right action to have appropriate funding. I was, I was listening to Neil deGrasse Tyson do a, do a lecture on it and he had a great quote. Dr. Tyson said, it's, it's not good enough to be right. You have to be effective. And I was thinking of this topic that, you know, you can look at the data and be unequivocally absolutely right that funding is, is an issue, but it's not enough to be right, has to be effective. So what are the ways in which we can effectively advocate to secure that effective funding and that adequate funding? It's not something that's solved totally in, in Lake Orion. In a lot of ways, that's solved by demanding it and commanding it of our public officials and getting that handled through finance. But I think the time is right and the moment is right to be more loud and more proud to stand on the merits of the accomplishments that happened through COVID without any significant, in fact, often on the, on the backs, as we talked about today, on the backs of cuts, to stand loud and proud and say, look at what was able to be accomplished. Now, let's turn that question around and stop assuming that that is adequate or effective in today's society. It's, it's just not, you all deserve better and the profession deserves better. Technology transformation is one that, that is not going away. The world has experienced a step change in technology transformation, transformation. And it really is a generational change. The stats demonstrate the incredible pace of change and how much has been able to be accomplished. We've seen in Lake Orion, things done in days and weeks that, that normally would, would be taken on over the course of months or even years of time. And it absolutely is amazing. Coming out of crisis mode, the challenge shifts a little bit and the challenge shifts to sustaining and embedding change, not only with the way people are, you know, even in the plan that was shared tonight, being able to move from in person to the short, the days that are abbreviated and, and the, the work at home. But after that, when we get back into something that has a, a more of a normal pace to it, how do we use that as a chance to really thrive through technology transformation and innovate and embed it? And it's going to require a lot of focus, especially on giving people time for professional development to continue to learn and embed the technology and also to embrace some innovation, which will, which will result in failure. There's going to be some ideas that might not pan out, that ideas that get invested in that, that don't reach the, the full potential that maybe was envisioned at the beginning, but they're worth it. They're worth doing because that is part of the learning process and not only replicating successes, but learning from failures to embed technology transformation. And the last one I had from, from my view was unparalleled teamwork and togetherness. This has been a hallmark. I think this board ought to be very, very proud of that, but I think we role modeled in a lot of ways can look at what happens in the district and it is unbelievable, the amount of teamwork that happens when it's centered, as it often is, on doing right for kids and dragon pride on it. So at the end of the day, it's all about doing best for kids and focusing on that, that unparalleled teamwork. So that collection of things, you know, it's not groundbreaking. It's, it's probably not that, that novel for those of us who are closest to it, but I, I'm glad to share that it was, it was at least very worthwhile for me to stop and reflect and offer some of those thoughts, looking back and looking forward. Overall, a sincere and hearty thank you to, to each of you. I could say something profound and inspiring because you all have inspired me in, in different ways. And you will be getting a handwritten note from me in short order on that. So want to, want to certainly just make sure you all know and hear my appreciation. Specifically, want to send a special thank you to Heidi. I think it was a cup of coffee at Starbucks somewhere around 2014 or 15 that kind of started this train rolling a little bit. And you are truly an inspiring and inspired leader who I continue to learn a ton from. Scott, thank you for, for bringing me into this and kind of giving me the opportunity to be a participant or encouraging me to, to look into the opportunity to be a participant in this wonderful work. Many of you know Missy, Maren and Gabby, the three of them are amazing people. I'm fortunate to have them in my life and couldn't do this without them. Grateful for having the chance to do this with all of you. Grateful and amazed by our admin, teachers, staff. Excited for where this, this goes next and excited for where you all, you all take it. Thank you.
You're muted, Jim.
Thanks, Nate. Appreciate it. Mary Jo? Mary Jo, you're muted. You're muted, Mary Jo.
That's hilarious. I just told you you were. I just wanted to, it's late. I want to say thank you for this wonderful gift. I don't know if everybody can see this. It has the Lake Orion logo and it lights up. And so awesome gift. Thank you, thank you, thank you for that. Quickly, the leadership team, kudos to the food drive. I dropped awesome stuff. It was a well-oiled machine. And when I went in on Friday, that entire atrium in front of the, the performing arts area was chock full of food. So yay, just a wonderful job. Um, I continue to appreciate the hard work that the staff and the admin has done to put, to get everything together and continue to move the district forward with all of the fits and starts and bumps and pitfalls that have happened just in this little bit of time that I've been serving with you all. You really all are trying to move students forward and to continue learning. And I know everybody from the custodial staff to Ben play a role in that. And I just wanted to give one last shout out while I can to the teachers because I know how hard it is. I really, really do. And it bothers me when I see on social media, things that, sorry, that try to infuse politics into why we make decisions when it has nothing to do with that or people blaming all the, the unions got them to make this decision. Anybody who says that knows nothing about the teachers or the unions in this district, nothing. We have always had such a phenomenal working relationship with all the unions. Each side gives and takes, but nobody, nobody tries to push an agenda. And I just, like I said, that bothers me and I just want everyone to know that is not how we decide stuff here in Lake Orion, not now, not ever. I want you to know I've enjoyed working with you all and filling in. Nate, hope you continue to have success in all that you do. I appreciate working with you on committees. We ended up on two committees together and I always appreciated what you bring to the table, your business acumen that really put a slant on things that I don't have that background. So I've always appreciated that. So thank you. Board, you know, I love you all. I appreciate you all. Remember that our job, your job is oversight. And that is the administration's job to, to lay everything out. You always want to be careful not to overstep because that's when bad things will happen. On that, have a wonderful holiday. Wish you all the very best and I'm around if you need me for anything.
Thank you, Mary Jo. You know, this is always, when this transition comes in a board, it's always a bittersweet moment. Because when a board functions as a unit, as a team, that's complementary in nature as we have in this board, it's very difficult to see that board makeup change. And that's the case with this board. Nate, you joined us as kind of a result of our previous superintendent, Mary Janopoulos, looking at our situation and knowing that we had to do a thorough job of having a conversation with our community. of having a conversation with our community. So, she tagged you to lead that effort and having that community conversation so we could determine what the next steps were for improving Lake Orion and making it the district that we know it could be and it has become. And you successfully carried that out. You provided that conversation and those results distilled into a product that was useful to the board and we greatly appreciated it and it also guided the district as we moved forward. Then you decided to take that kind of crazy step and get on the board. And, and it was a great thing for our board to have your unique insights and fresh thinking that helped us to look at things in a different way many times. So, you're going to be missed and, but I know you'll be around. And I want to express my appreciation to you as a fellow board member and to Missy for letting you be a fellow board member and wish you well and I'm sure I'll see you around the community. Thank you for everything. Mary Jo, going back to our former superintendent, I remember the day we sat in the conference room and you looked at me after Marion had been our interim superintendent for a time and said, "What do you think the board would think about Marion staying on permanently?" And the rest is history and the board agreed. But it was always your steady hand and your thoughtful approach that when we had some turbulent moments on our board, you were always there to keep us on the, on the road and not over on the shoulder throwing up gravel. And I have appreciated working with you all these years and you never know when we may call on you again. But thank you for everything you've done and thank you to Ralph for letting you spend that time with us and I'm sure I'll see you around the community as well.
Absolutely.
And that being said, I would just like to say Merry Christmas to all and to all. A good night. Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Good night, all. Happy holidays.
We are adjourned.
Goodbye, everybody.